Hey, you got your tape recorder? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you. Great, thank you. You all set? All set?
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and get started due to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alan, you want to do us a favor again? Thank you.
Well, we've got a lot to be thankful for this week, so let's go to the Lord and say thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the rain we received. It's been long overdue, and we almost forgot what it's like. We ask that you bless us with more rain. We ask that you be with those who have special needs among us, around us, our neighbors, those that aren't shared, those that you know, the heavy hearts. We always want to lift up and remember our neighbors, more ways than one if possible. Thank you for this evening, for our council and our staff. We ask that the business tonight is very important, and you give us clear heads, calm hearts, and ability to process in a way that's glorifying you in our town. And I name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Can you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Hartle.
Present.
Councilmember Morganelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilmack.
Here.
Mayor Wayne Coop.
Here. All right, let's get the show on the road. Come on up. This young lady's going to tell us all about impact fees. Tap on it, see if it's working. Tap on the microphone, see if it's on. Nope, it's not off.
Wrong spot. Thank you. Everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. You ready for me to get started? Do you have any? All right. Good evening, my name is Tara Hollis. I'm with Willdan Financial Services. We are a firm located, I'm located in the Orlando office. We have offices throughout the Southeast, as well as California, Colorado, Texas. So I appreciate you having me here tonight. I'd like to go through, as we mentioned, you've had us look at your impact fees, and based on some of that information, we're having this demonstrated need study tonight, and that's why we're here to talk to you. I don't see the, okay. Just making sure. So just a little, sorry, just a little bit about Willdan. Like I mentioned, we offer and do for municipalities cost allocation and user fee studies, financial and economic impact feasibility studies, development fee, which are your impact fees, as well as utility impact fees. So like for water, we also, I have experience in doing utility rates for all type of utilities, water, stormwater. So we've done natural gas, we do electric. And then also district formation assessment programs, like streetlight assessments, fire district assessments, as well as bond compliance and feasibility studies that would go along with if you were trying to issue debt for certain capital projects, et cetera. Relevant experience for Willdan, in general, in the past five years, for the regular nonutility development impact fees, we've done over 125 studies throughout the United States. Over 75 utility impact fee studies, really just in the Southeast, so that's right out of our office. And then we have multiple staff, including myself, that for water utilities, we sit on an AWA committee that's looking at developing an actual manual of practice for developing impact fees. So that'll be a manual practice from AWA that should be coming out, which is American Waterworks Association, which should be coming out probably, I assume, within the next year. So we've been actually putting together that manual of practice on how you calculate impact fees for utility systems. Closer, so I don't keep moving far away from the microphone. The next two pages are just a list of some of the projects we've done in the last, like I said, the last five years. The first slide is going to be for the development impact fees, so that's going to be nonutility system when we're talking about those, parks, rec, streets, police, fire, all those different administration, all those different types of nonutility impact fees. And then the second slide is going to be clients that we've done utility system impact fees in the last five years. And next, we'll get into the demonstrated need study and why we're here tonight. Back in 2021, there was House Bill 337 was passed. And basically, what that did is, prior to that time, there was still the Florida Impact Fee Act, but prior to that time, there weren't limits on how you could, how often impact fees were updated and the level of the impact fee, the change in the impact fee, and how it had to be implemented. So what that did is, when House Bill 337 was passed, it basically put limitations and restrictions on phasing in impact fees. So if your impact fee increases were 25%, they had to be phased in over a two-year period. If they were 50%, they had to be phased in over a four-year period. Before that time, that didn't, that phasing in didn't exist. And then also, they were limited to no more than a 50% increase from the current impact fee. And then, like I said, it can only be, now it can only be adjusted minimum every four years. So you couldn't come back before four years, based on this new House bill. However, also, in the statutes, there is a requirement that they can be increased beyond these phase-in limitations if certain criteria are met. So the first is, a demonstrated need study has to be conducted within the 12 months prior to the adoption of the new impact fees that justify why the limits in that House bill and in that statute should be adjusted. So, as well as, the demonstrated need study must demonstrate extraordinary circumstances. So what circumstances relate to why it should be justified for you doing more than either the 50% and/or not phasing it in and doing a fee all at once, an adjustment all at once. You have to have a minimum of at least two publicly noticed workshops demonstrate, or dedicated to this extraordinary need. So this is here, this, we were here last week on April 23rd. Now we're doing the second hearing tonight. And then, to, again, to show the extraordinary need and move forward with the fee increases in excess of what the statute allows, is you have to have a minimum of a 2/3 majority vote of your governing body in order to go past that. So that would have to adopt the fact that there is a demonstrated need and that you're acknowledging the demonstrated need to exceed those phase-in and limit provisions. And again, 2/3, so if you have four, it's a minimum of 2/3. So you would have, to have three of your four, or if you have five, you would have to have potentially four of the five. So Montverde's extraordinary circumstances. There's two major ones. You've had significant population growth since, so your, your development impact fees, so your parks and rec, your admin, your streets, those were all established in 2017. So we're going to look at that timeframe and look at your growth between that timeframe. We're also going to look at how costs have increased over that timeframe. And then the water impact fees were adopted in 2007. So again, we'll get to that and both customer growth and your, your cost growth during that time period. So the first is your significant population growth. So basically, the historical growth, like we mentioned, if we look at the rate, we look at this town versus the county versus the state and compare your growth rate from 2014 to 2024. 2025 numbers haven't been reported yet, so that's what we're using, as well as the county and the state's growth rate over that same time period. Obviously, the town is much smaller, but we can see over 2014 to 2024, there's been almost a 50% growth in the population within the town of Montverde. During that same time period in the county, the county increased approximately 40%. So the town's going at 10% faster than the county. And then if we look at the state, the growth of the state was a little bit less than 20% over that same timeframe. This just demonstrates those same numbers, just showing what kind of each year, where the growth was and what percentage of growth was, setting that back is indexing it to 2014 is our base year. So this can see, you can see there was a little bit of a dip in the town back in kind of the COVID timeframe, and then it's picked back up again. And so you can see again, the town has had significant, more significant growth than even the county and the state. So projected growth, this information is provided. We look at census data. We also look at the Bieber Bureau of Economic Business Research provides information and has projections for growth. Not just, we're looking here at just the next 10 years, but they go out even further than that. So they project growth for various town, county, state projections, low, median, high growth projections. And so that's what we're looking at here, is the projected growth based on the information that we obtained from that source. And like I mentioned, Montverde is looking at growing almost another 50% in the next 10 years. So it's projected to go from about 2,200 to about 3,200 for population. Lake County, a little bit slower than it had grown over the 10 years prior, but it's looking at about an 18%. And then for the state, they're looking at a, they're projecting approximately a 12% growth. So again, the town is exceeding both the county and the state projections, and therefore, we need to look at what, what needs to be done to make sure that you're able to continue to provide that level of service as more customers, more property owners are coming in within the town limits. Again, the next slide is just a graphical depiction versus the table. And we just looked at it being, it's, you know, they, they kind of estimated it based on linear growth. So you can see, the town is significantly higher than both the county and the state projections. So the first one for the, for the demonstrated need is really, like we mentioned, the successive growth and keeping pace with that growth, as well as being able to provide a level of service for that growth as we continue to move forward. And the second part with that level of service is the rapidly increasing construction costs. So most of you are aware, the Consumer Price Index, general inflation has continued to rise. There's also other indices that we use within the, our industry, where we look at, there's a building cost industry, Building Cost Index, which is produced by Engineering News Record. They also have a Construction Cost Index, which we use for utility systems, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. But we look at the Building Cost Index. We also look at, so you can see here, since the study was done in 2017, that Building Cost Index has gone up, there's a 44% increase. What that does is that relates to construction costs and is showing what you could buy in 2017, what you projected in 2017 versus costs now are about 44% higher. You have been making minor adjustments for inflation, but not anywhere near this 44%. The same thing when we look at the utility system, so the water system. The initial study was done in 2007. What we look at as part of this, is you look at, we bring stuff up to current day's costs. So if we're looking at what things cost in 2007 versus 2024, 2025, we look again at two different indices, Engineering News Record, the Construction Cost Index, which deals more with utilities, as well as for water systems, there's also another industry index that's used, and that's called the Handy Whitman Index. And that tracks specific water utility, line item by line item, trans, different transmission, treatment. It's a whole page long. These have both gone back, they've been, both E and R and Handy Whitman have been tracking since the early 1900s. So there's a long history of information. Handy Whitman is released twice a year. They do a January 1st index, which was released in May. And then they do a July 1st index, which is released in November. E and R does a monthly index. So that's what you'll see on here. The E and R, we were able to get through April. And so based on from 2007 to now, the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index has increased over 73%. If we look at Handy Whitman, which again, is specific for water utilities, that increase has been over 150% in costs, based on what they've been tracking. So based on these two items, both the excessive population growth, as well as the increase in construction costs, really, we're looking at, if you had to follow the phase-in provisions, as well as the limits, you would, the town would not be able to continue providing the level of service that they currently provide. So on the water system and on the parks, rec, streets, the admin buildings, they wouldn't be able to continue to provide that level of service because if we phase in, based on your existing impact fees, which your existing impact fees were set based on, which we're going to talk about in a minute, how impact fees are set, but they were based on strictly proposed CIP and so capital improvements versus, we typically look at setting them based on a buy-in to the existing system plus, plus a portion of the capital improvements that are coming. So you're, back in 2017, these were set lower than they could have been set at that time, which the House Bill 337 had not been passed at that time, so there weren't the limits that there are now. So that's one reason that we need to look at. Again, going past the four-year phase-in, as well as the limit on the 50% due to the increased construction costs. Again, as we're looking forward, as new customers are buying into the existing system, as well as the growth-related improvements in your capital improvement plan, and their portion of that, that's not 100% allocated to the new, it's, we look at the entire system, add it together, and then they get a portion of that CIP, as well as a portion of the existing system, based on the level of service standards that have been adopted by the town. So basically, if you look at, if we kept the provisions of House Bill 337 with the phase-in and the limits, again, the town would have a shortfall and have to come up with that money from other places because they, and would not either, not be able to provide the level of service or have to find other sources to provide, continue to provide the level of service standards that are currently adopted. So the next steps, like I mentioned, if we're looking at adopting the demonstrated need study, is we had the two public hearings. This is the second public hearing of the two. We will, then you have the first publicly noticed, we got, sorry, the first publicly noticed workshop was held last Wednesday on the 23rd. And then basically, the next thing would be, you would have to have, to move forward, some, you know, a hearing that would then, you'd look to accept the demonstrated need studies and the provisions of that demonstrated need study, adopt those, and in order to do that, you would have to have a 2/3 majority vote. And if you want to wait, we're waiting to the end for anybody who has questions. Okay. So the next is just, one, we've talked about the phase-in provisions and why you need to move beyond those. Now I'm going to just quickly, again, step through the basic analysis that was done on the impact fees, so you can understand what we're looking at and why we're looking at those amounts, the process that was undertaken in order to do the, look at the impact fees and develop the updated impact fees. Just a little background, as we mentioned, about 2,000 residents, 2,000, 2,100 residents as of 2024. Looking at the population increase, we're looking at approximately another 1,000 to 1,200 residents coming in, in the next 10 years. The increase in the actual units that we have, those were set, then we sat down with planning, we sat down with town staff, we sat down with some other members of the community and looked at, one, the dwelling units, we went through lot by lot, the available lots that are still within the town limits and what we were projecting to come on each year over the 10-year period. And for single-family dwelling units, we're looking at about 500 more units coming in. For multifamily, again, going through, and that could be potentially apartments, other multi-unit dwelling units throughout the town. And when I say apartment, some of that could be associated with the, some of your commercial and institutional customers that are already within the town limits. We're looking at approximately 11 units over that period, so about one, potentially one unit a year coming in. And what we look at there is why we look at single-family versus multifamily, is they have a slightly different impact on your system, and they also have a slightly different benefit that they receive from the system. So we differentiate between single-family and multifamily. We get the total number of people per unit for single-family, and that, which is a little about, about 2.5, I think, 2.4. And we also look at people per multifamily, which is slightly less. We also went through your commercial and institutional properties and looked at a plan and what type, what you were anticipating coming in over the next 10 years for both commercial square footage and institutional square footage. And that's about 40,000 square foot on commercial and a little over 150,000 square foot of institutional. And basically, then, we also sat down, looked at your capital improvement plan, went through that, went through each line item, determined which ones were growth-related versus renewal and replacements. Renewal replacements don't get included in the impact fee. Only growth-related items get included in the impact fees that are being calculated. So that would be, and based on that, we're looking at, to continue the level of service, additional improvements would be needed. So what is an impact fee? It's basically a one-time charge. You buy into the system, you're, based on your level of service. You don't pay it again unless in some circumstance where you're, potentially, if a property is redeveloped, et cetera, and is taking on more than what they paid in to begin with. So if you were buying for water, 450 gallons a day of capacity, unless you're going to come back and need 900, you wouldn't pay, you know, you pay that 450 and it's a one-time payment for the 450 gallons that you're buying. It's, has to be imposed at the permit stage. So you can't do it before a building is completed. And it's within the town limits. And then it's not a tax or special assessment, so it doesn't go on your tax bill. It doesn't come as a special assessment or a multi-year special assessment. And it's subject to the provisions of Section 163, 31801, which is known in the Florida State Statutes as the Florida Impact Fee Act. So this is just, if you go online, the statute is significantly longer than the few bullet points that are here. But this is just to summarize, basically, an impact fee must be proportional and reasonably connected to the need for additional capital. So again, that's already mentioned, it can't just be renewal and replacement. It has to be something that's additional and growth-related. It has to, the expenditures of the funds you collect for impact fees have to be used for the benefits that are occurring in the new development. So you have to use it for growth-related items. It must be based on recent or localized data. One of the ways to do that is looking at trending some of the costs, which is one of the ways we did it. I'm a certified valuation analyst. When we do utility systems and other systems like that, that's one way we look, is we take original costs and trend it to current day costs, using some of the indices that we mentioned. And in doing that, we also assumed, you can look at original costs, you can look at replacement costs, you can look at replacement costs new, less depreciation. We use replacement costs new, less depreciation because we realize and recognize that the system isn't brand-new. So as people are buying into that, we are giving an offset for the fact that you're buying into a system that is, is not a brand-new system. So we look at replacement costs new, less depreciation. What we also assume, because we're using asset inventory and asset listings provided by the town, is that we assume that those are already fully loaded costs. So sometimes, when you're putting together a valuation, you look at adding soft costs. We assume, to be conservative, that those numbers for original costs are fully loaded. The same thing with your capital improvement plan. We assume that those are fully loaded, would be any design, et cetera, costs associated would be in those numbers that we received as part of the capital improvement plan. The revenue from the impact fees must be used for acquiring, constructing, or improving capital facilities to benefit growth, so the new users. And it may not be used to pay existing debt. You know you don't have existing debt currently, so that's one thing. But if you did have debt, like on a water treatment plant, if you had debt associated with that, we would give a credit off of the fee that we were coming up with for that debt, because then that would be being paid for in a different manner. So the next two slides are kind of our basic project approach. And then it's going to be the kind of impact fees and how they're developed. So these kind of go hand in hand, we'll go through them pretty quickly. But basically, when we sit down and do any project, but when we do an impact fee study, we have a kickoff meeting and we review the goals and objectives with our client, as well as any policy issues that there may be. For impact fees, the next thing we want to sit down and look at is identify existing development and future growth. So we have to understand where you are and where you're going so that we can, again, identify which projects are growth-related versus non-growth-related. We need to determine what facility standards we're looking at, which we'll get to that in just a minute. And then we'll determine facility needs and costs, which is looking at, again, if we're looking at existing or proposed or combined system. Identify funding and financing alternatives. So that's also, I mentioned debt. And if you're going to finance some of this with debt, that would be a credit. Also, anything that's coming from grants. So if any of your, and we looked at that. So if any of your, and we looked at that on the water side, some of the proposed projects are going to be potentially funded with grants, so we didn't include the whole project cost in developing the new impact fee, we only included the portion that, that was projected to not come from grants and/or debt. We calculate the proposed fees and prepare a report, which you have our current draft report, we wanted to present this, see if there was any other feedback or questions, and then we would be finalizing that report. And then, we have this for the demonstrated need, but we also do workshops or any other type of public hearings before you and while you're adopting the ordinance that would relate to the impact fees. The next slide, like we mentioned, is just, where we've been talking about existing development, future growth, what facilities are providing service to your existing development, how much of those can also be used towards new development, as well as what other projects do you need that would be growth-related, that would continue to provide that level of service. We look at, again, like I said, this is kind of a, just another way to look at what I just presented, but we, basically, that's what we do, we cost out your existing system, we look at what's coming on, is growth-related on the proposed, we look at how we're going to recover that, are we just going to recover the proposed CIP, which is called an incremental approach, the buy-in method, which is just existing system because you don't have any CIP, which you do, because you have capital improvement, or a hybrid, which is, which is both, so we're looking at the existing and the proposed system, combining that together and then dividing that, basically, by what your projected total system makeup is going to be in 2035. And that's where we're talking about the cost allocation methods, which is what this slide is basically telling you, those three, existing inventory planned facilities or system plan, which is both of those, and again, that's what we looked at in developing these, was the system plan. The development impact fees that are considered as part of this study, we have three non-utility and one utility, non-utility are administration facilities, transportation and streets, and then parks and trails. Based on your level of service standards for streets, you have adopted the provisions that Mount Dora has for their streets, so if those levels, since you've adopted those level of service requirements, those also include provisions for a portion of some sidewalks, because that's part of their level of service, and you have adopted that level of service as the town's level of service. So the streets will also include some sidewalk projects. And then for the utility, it's water and utility system that we're looking at. So data sources used for existing population, we looked at University of Florida and the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, or BIBR. There's also On the Map Report, what that does is it breaks down all of your workers within the town, breaks them down by industry, so you know, government or different types of commercial, hospitals, institutional, but it breaks down all the workers within the town, which we use that to understand when we're applying things for the, some of the factors we use in developing the, the streets or transportation factors. We have to understand the makeup of the types of employees you have, as well as how many employees per industry type. We also look at occupant densities, so that's looking at, that provides us information on single-family and multifamily homes, how many structures there are, as well as the population per home. So we use that from, that comes from the U.S. Census Bureau, so we look at that, as well as for occupant densities. We also look at the ITE, which is a traffic transportation manual that they've put out, and they've done various traffic studies on different, again, different types of businesses, morning, night, average day, weekend day, and it tracks both trips, based on, it can look at square footage, it can look at number of workers, it can look at type of property. It's, well, I have it electronically, but when it didn't, it was 100, you know, it's thousands of pages worth of this transportation manual. So it's a very thick manual, they updated, I think this last one was updated, it's the 11th edition, it's been, I'm going to say, within the last 10 years, but they, they update the manual at certain, certain times, so periodically, again, we're on the 11th Existing facility inventories and facility costs, the original cost in your asset listing was provided by the town. And then future infrastructure costs, again, that was provided by the town, but it was based in your capital improvement plan that had been adopted by the town. So this is just a quick list, we can, you know, in the report, we have more detailed lists of some of the improvements that are looking at coming online as part of this, and again, any of the, like for the parks, you had a boat ramp repair, that's not included in here, because that is just repair, so you have, I think there was another one that was replacing some of the lighting, again, repair, maintenance, that's not a growth-related item, that's not included in here. So you can see there's some additional office space, I know right now you're using part of this as a library, but you're looking at actually having and providing library service, so library space, community building space, so that's under the administration facilities as some of the growth-related items. Streets, like I mentioned, there's some street improvements, as well as the sidewalk improvements to continue to provide the level of service standards that you've adopted. For parks, you had some upgrade, upgrading improvements at the parks, again, to provide that level of service that you had adopted for the parks, as well as a new playground at Truska Park, a new park for Park Highland, and then that also includes your multimodal trails, so that's some of your bike and trails as part of your park system, because it's a park and trails impact fee. And then for the water, you have some upgrades to both the treatment and transmission system. And again, for that one, especially for water, we knew some of that was potentially coming from grants, so we discounted that about 80% and assumed that 20% would really be costs that the town would have to incur, and 80% of those projected costs would be coming from grants. The next two slides are just showing what the, based on this analysis, what the maximum impact fees could be moving forward. And again, these are what would be needed to continue to provide that level of service. And that just goes through the administration facilities, transportation, and then parks and trails. Typically, parks and trails only goes to residential, not non-residential, because that's really benefit to homeowners within the community, so that's not applied to commercial and institutional properties. One thing we did do here is because you have a large percentage of your current square footage is for institutional properties, we did look at separating that out, instead of just having residential, multi, single-family, multifamily, and then commercial, is we looked at separating that out, because there are different characteristics, which have different impacts on streets, some of the, the parks and, I mean, well, not the parks, sorry, the library and the administrative facilities, and so we have separated out a separate institutional class. And then, again, residential is per dwelling unit, typically, commercial institutional would be based on a per square foot or per thousand square foot, this fee that we're showing here is a per square foot, so if you added 10,000 square foot of institutional space, you know, and it was an administrative facility, that would be multiplied by the 40 cents per, per square foot. The next one is for water. Basically, what we do there is the same thing, we trend costs to come current cost for the water treatment, then we look at any improvements, and then what you do there is we look at a cost, we break it down, we look at the treatment capacity of the plant, we take out and look at a max day versus average day peaking, or the peaking factor versus your average day usage, to come up with basically what the weighted capacity of the plant is, which is similar with lines, typically lines are in transmission lines or have a similar capacity, because that's all you can put through it, because that's what your treatment plant is. But we basically come down to what a cost per gallon is, then your level of service standards for a single-family residential is 450 gallons per day, so basically, every single-family residential would be buying in it and reserving 450 gallons per day of treatment capacity, and so therefore, based on that, you can see the fee would be $6,150. And it's right now a little over $5,500. And so then, commercial, typically, when they come in, they buy a certain level of treatment, so theirs would be a multiple of that gallons per day, if they were buying 900 gallons per day, then it would be, you know, 900 times the 1369. The next slide is just talking about implementation, so once you've adopted the demonstrated need study, if you're going to, you know, if you look at doing that, but basically, in order then, once you're moving forward with adopting new impact fees, you have to provide at least 90 days' notice. So you can adopt the new impact fees, but you would have to, the effective date would have to be a minimum of 90 days after that adoption to go into effect, so that gives time, projects that are in process, et cetera, to wrap up in that 90 days, so that's the minimum that you could do, is you would have to wait a minimum of 90 days to make them effective once you adopted them. Again, the town must account for and report impact fee collections and expenditures, so you have to track what you're spending any of the impact fee money on, and you can't collect it any sooner than the issuance of the building permit, and then, again, each year, you have to provide either your accountant, CFO, finance director, et cetera, would have to provide a report, basically saying in an affidavit, saying that the government entity is in compliance with the provisions of how the money was being spent and, you know, how it's being used each year. So you would have to provide that certification to the state. And then, technically, I'm ready for questions, but there's one last slide that we just have in there that I have to put, because we are a municipal advisor firm as well, so we have to say that we, in this project, we are not acting as your municipal advisor or financial advisor on debt or any of those type of things, we're here acting as a, a technical expert in developing fees, the impact fees for you, but we're not acting as a financial advisor on how you should be spending your money, where you should be putting your money, et cetera.
And when a developer challenges us, you would be coming and defend us, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody have questions on the council?
Would this affect, would this affect Osgood?
So any new homes built after you approved the second ordinance, 90 days after that, would be included, so that would be any new home, including Osgood.
You got something, Joe?
Can you go to the slide for entitlements, or I'm sorry, that was my question for entitlements, the background, it was a background slide, it had like 11 multifamily, it had 40,000 commercial.
There it is.
So with, the 500, is that counting the entitlements? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it includes probably not all the entitlements, just what we would expect over the next 10 years, as worse, you know, kind of worst-case scenario.
And then the 11 multifamily, and you had mentioned apartments, so that sort of...
It's school.
Yeah, I would say there's two things, our code currently allows for an apartment unit buildings in the commercial area above a commercial building, so you can do a downstairs commercial and upstairs apartment, like Winter Garden has, so in theory, you could have 10 units there with what we have downtown, maybe a little bit more, but also, the school does have a couple duplex and fourplexes, and it's probably reasonable with their expansion, we'll see in the next 10 years, they may ask to come in and do a couple of those as well. Not to say they will, but we want to make sure we have a factor in there for multifamily, because it is a different rate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty. Anybody in the crowd want to ask anything? Wait a minute, you got to, you got to state your name and address.
Len Boris, 17604 Long Beach Drive.
Okay, thank you.
One of the early slides had, I couldn't see from the back, it looked like it said our current population is 2,191, and you're expecting, give or take, but you're expecting a growth to 31 something?
Yeah, it's, that's a little exaggerated.
24 and 35, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. First one is, is the 48% growth based on anything other than statistics, and do we actually have the space? And that goes to the second part of my question, you want to, do we have acreage in the town to build 500 single-family dwellings available?
Um, go ahead.
Yes, if you look at the three developments that are either gone through or through the works, that would get you that population, rural range was 234 homes, 139 at Osgood, we're probably going to see 100 and some change out of Montverde Estates, plus we've been getting little fill-in homes around the area, so with the existing entitlements, it could be that, yes.
Could get to that.
Just depends what the economy does, obviously.
We did an entitlement study two years ago, and it was shocking.
Okay.
And just for, I think, Mayor, it was, it was absolutely, there's about 5,800 homes, 6,000 homes, I think, could get built that already have entitlements in the town limits.
I don't know if it was that high, but it was, it shocked me.
It was a lot.
Doesn't seem like there's that much open space. All right, speaking about multifamily, you mentioned apartments over, stores and those type of items, you mentioned...
The school.
School, okay. Is there a limit on the size of a multifamily dwelling?
35 foot.
I see these four-story things going up all over, we're by East Ridge School, along the bike trail.
Our rule's already 35 foot, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's on, even live local can't go higher than that, right? Because that's the, you got to go...
So it's a height requirement, they can't build higher than three stories?
That's what I'm saying, but let me, I need to confirm that.
I would have to pull your land development code, I don't recall offhand, the live local is whatever the maximum height that you currently have within a mile.
Right.
And yours are two stories.
It's 35.
Yeah, I'll confirm, it is, it is 35 feet would be the maximum. Any, any apartment unit that's, we don't have anything zone multifamily for what you would see like a traditional apartment, like you see in Claremont or Oakland.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, the only, the only thing we have is you could build a unit above your commercial, which requires a site plan approval by this town council, and it'll be a public hearing, or it could be built in the institutional area as well.
But it has to be less than 35 foot.
Correct.
Correct, okay. How much available acreage is there in the city right now? Do you have an idea?
I would have to pull out entitlements out.
What'd you say?
How much available acreage is there in the city?
It was like 800 lots, around that, and then we're building 234 now, so, you know, six, five something, 580 still.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the entitlements was around 800.
It was, but that included the 234.
Yep.
All righty, well, thank you very much, you did a great job. We get, we get to go to the next step now. And you want to leave, that's fine, don't worry about it. We're done, man. No, you're fine. We're all done, right? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Well, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guns say nay, okay, so now, we'll make a motion, well, we don't make a motion, but...
And Mayor, the, I apologize, the next meeting is advertised at 7:30 for public meetings, so we do need to wait 15 minutes, if that's okay?
Go ahead and get some coffee or something. 15 minutes.
Hot mic.
I don't know if there's a problem with the audio, but I'm getting two texts that people aren't able to hear.
It could be user errors, or it could be our, and that'll, I just wanted to make you aware.
Thank you.
Hey, did you listen to this meeting?
Yeah, Danny, good.
I'll give you another one for this meeting.
Hot mic.
The what? Hot mic? Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
He watched the Judy back trip today.
He watched the Judy back trip today.
I just remember, we do have one discussion item before the CRA, to talk about the budget priority for 2016. Nothing specific, but I'm so glad that no one understood that.
Oh, good. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I was just, I was like, oh, yeah, that is first. Yeah, and it's, nope, I don't have any slides, so just someone here kind of bought them. Board Council would like to see you.
Oh, I got publicity.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we want to hear.
Well, he didn't say they were good guys. He said...
Well...
Oh, man.
Yep.
You got that, though?
Yeah.
Poor lady. She feels like, you know, I cut that for her. It's a formal, formal...
Why?
No. It's, it's, it's time to shine, you know? And we're sitting here all bored out of our minds. You know, we're all just rolling our eyes right now.
And thinking the manager left at 14 months working.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I bet. At least she can back us up one time soon.
Very, very.
I mean, a lot of that is, it's statist, talking about what you gotta say to do.
Yeah. No, that was good. I'm glad we threw it.
All right, let's, let's get started. We'll do the Pledge of Leitens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think Ellen did a really good job the last time, and that probably be good enough for this one, too.
Backed by popular demand.
All right, if you can do roll call. Present.
Councilmember Morgan Alley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Womack.
Here.
Mayor Wayne Coop.
Here. All righty, let's go ahead and get started. And first thing we're gonna talk about is things that we want to put, that you guys, everybody, has ideas for what we need to put on our budget for '25, '26. So, now's the time to start talking about it, and I'm gonna open it up to the public first, see if anybody wants to talk to the council about any ideas that you have for us to include in our budget for next year. And our year starts at the end of October, at the end of September, so October 1st. Anybody want, you want a swimming pool?
No.
Butterfly Garden is gonna be a swimming pool.
No, that's gonna be, you dive into that big tank that's being built. All right, I'll bring it back to council. Anybody have anything they want to talk about, put on the budgets that's not on it already?
Well, I commend the town for doing great for all of the improvements for those who are active. We, we have the pickleball, and the tennis, and the basketball. We've upgraded all of the parks. I know Triscuit Park is work in progress, but, but that's coming. So, I, I think that we've, we've made improvements for just about every segment of our township, with the exception of our seniors. I, at this point, I, I have no real suggestion about which way to go with that, but I wouldn't mind seeing something done on behalf of our seniors.
And just clarify, are you talking housing, programming, events?
Um, I, off the top of my, my head, the first one that I would suggest would be some type of social event. It, it, you know, the Butterfly Garden, that, that was a, a good social event for those that turned out, and those that were there, woo-hoo! You did an excellent job. All right? That, that's gonna be beautiful. The, the picnic, the same thing. There may be some of our, our senior citizens that, that get out and about at the picnic, but I don't think that, that most of them, perhaps by mobility or other health issues. So, like I said, at this point, I really don't have a, a pinpoint direction. I would welcome any feedback from any of the, the seniors that we, including those on council, which I technically qualify as one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
See, looks right at Ellen.
That would eliminate you, however, Mr. Morgan Alley, so...
No, he's a young man.
Just kidding. Just kidding. But any, yeah.
Well, I think of the library, once the library is functional, so many areas of the town, of other communities, they use the library as a, somehow, as a...
Gathering.
...center of gathering for things they can do inside controlled climate, all that good stuff, so...
I, I think that's a, a great place to, to start something, a, a good facility to, to have, to use and utilize.
Sure. We'll definitely look into that, and when we get to the CRA, April might be able to answer it. I believe you can use some CRA funds for some social and senior events to kind of help that, if it, because the library is in, is in the CRA. So, maybe if you could pop in on that a little bit when we get to that discussion, maybe that's the way of funding something like that, if it's approved.
Yep. My only other idea is a, a, kind of a community emergency response team. Ideally, you have it broken up into everybody's little community, and in the event that there's a, a storm, or more likely, when there is a storm, you know who has a generator. If you have medication that needs to be refrigerated, and you don't have power, you don't have a generator, but you know who does. If a tree falls and you, it, it needs to be removed right away. I, I know fallen trees, we all, let's get it quickly as possible, all removed. But if it's, if it's tampering you medically or in some other way, and, and you need to, to get out for medical reason or what have you, you know somebody who has a chainsaw. So, it's, it's kind of like a, a community safety net in the event of, of an emergency such as a storm, so that our neighbors know that if you need help with something particular, here's who you can reach out to. And ideally, you set it up with, again, like neighborhood captains, so that you don't have two or three people that are trying to cover everything through the, through the town. And it may be something that we can work through our security team with, such as, as it is. But anyway, those are, are my two suggestions for something that I'd like to see developing in the next budget.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All righty.
I will look into those.
Ellen?
Public Safety, FHP. We've increased the budget last year. Would like to do analysis or look at that. Paul and Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you two are more in the loop on scheduling and that, that aspect of it. If we've seen a, a need for it, I think that's been personally, as a councilman, as a city resident, that's been some of our best bucks spent on law enforcement and traffic control, and using FHP at randomly chosen hours, and we've increased it a little bit. I would think maybe increase it a little bit more. How much more? I don't know. Extra shift or something. Public Works, Paul, I don't know if, what's your needs for Public Works? Do we need a potential part-timer, two part-timers, no part-timers, increase additional? That's one. My last one was, has been, was brought to me at the butterfly situation, and I was aware of it, and has been... of it and has been even more so. We've talked about this with four fifty-five in our walkway that we've got, the, the trail. I've noticed in my subdivision in north of me up to, up to Fosgate, there are young mothers with strollers rolling down four fifty-five in and off the road at different times in the evenings to go to the trail because there's no access from where the trail ends on the north side up to Fosgate. And I'm a little concerned. I'm glad that our residents are using this, but I also kind of feel like it's hampering their access to use it because there's not a way to get there. I don't think my subdivision is not, they're okay without having sidewalks to get them to four fifty-five, but once they get to four fifty-five, that's kind of a different, you're on your own if you want to, if you want to walk there. If you want to load your kids up in the vehicle and go down there, a lot of them are just, hey, I want to keep going. I'm down to four fifty-five, but now I have to go on the, the grass, we're on the road, back and forth. I don't see that as a really great thing. I know we've discussed if a lot of that has to do with Lake County. I would like to feel as a resident and a councilman that I owe my residents a little bit more safety aspect to see if we can do something in our budget to offset that somehow, somehow, I don't know how. There's a lot of things with our stormwater along four fifty-five. That section is one of the sections that will be worked on stormwater, catch, for catch bases on the side of the road, that makes it a little difficult, but I think we can make a solution or find some ways to work on it. That's one of those three things that I'd like to see worked on.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Joe?
You had mentioned some senior things. Paul, I think you had mentioned at one point that Lake County has someone that we can actually use for senior type events for the library? You had mentioned it to me, to organize something like that.
Yeah, what I, what I mentioned, I've been talking with the county manager, Ms. Barker, and George Taylor, who's the library director, about possibly doing joint programming for all the libraries where the county would pitch in a little money, all the libraries could pitch in a little bit of money, then they can have a rotating person. So for instance, there could be a mini-ol on Wednesday and Montverde on Thursday. And it, you know, it could be various things from like a, maybe a yoga class or a senior stretching class to guitar lesson or something. And so that is something that I brought up and brought up to some of the other directors. And so we're going to look into that. I don't know if that could happen this fiscal year coming up, but there's a possibility of that. And I've also talked to a couple organizations that would donate and possibly do that. So it really just comes that someone needs to spearhead it on the county side. That's what I'm trying to encourage. So I'm going to still keep looking into that.
I think I agree. The library is a great place for something like that for seniors.
Correct. I would agree.
Or for any, you know, event like that. In reference to law enforcement, I do think we need more of that. One thing I want to be concerned about as we go down that road is our taxes. I want to make sure we're not doing things that are going to increase our taxes for our residents. So that's something to consider, I guess, when you guys are discussing this for law enforcement. I think it's something to think about, too.
Is it? Okay. I agree with Allen on the seniors and, and the same with Carol. And one of the things we did for six years was bingo, right before Kobe came. And bingo was a huge hit and we did it once a month for six years. And then Kobe came, Jamison was there every time. And it was, it was a really good event because getting the seniors to engage first is tough. So, you know, you got to get them to come out. And I would suggest bingo, but I know the town isn't a favor to do it because there's something about the town doing bingo that's a problem. I don't remember what it was. But the school sponsored it because they're a five oh one C three and you had to be a five oh one C three to do that. But maybe we can get them to sponsor it again. And I did it for seventy-two months. And I'm sure Carol was more than happy to jump in and take care of that part.
Well, I don't mind doing my share. Thank you for offering.
Okay. And then a hundred percent on the FHP. They do an outstanding job, the money we spend with them. And we raised it last year and, you know, more money going to that is a good idea. The community building, I think we put money for the community building, right?
We, we haven't budgeted anything for the community building yet. Depending on what we do on that, it's possible some of that could be impact fees if it's expansion of what's there. And just real quick, we've, the whole side of it is termite torn out. It's in pretty bad shape.
It's older than me. I mean, the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's old. So, and then we got the new fire, the old fire department. We're going to re-put money into that to make it a community building. It's going to be five thousand square foot, so it's going to be able to handle wetting, stuff like that. We got to put money in the budget for that because we're probably going to get it to that this year, next year rather. And then Paul and I talked about it. We need a more professional, and they're expensive, professional operation that does our gardens and flowers, because we spent a lot of money on shrubbery and all. And then it's, you know, the people that we have doing it need help and, and I think Paul's going to take care of that part. But that's the complaints I get is we spend all that money, you know, we spend ten, twenty thousand dollars on flowers and they're dead. You know, that's not working. Okay, that's all I got. Does that help you?
It does, yeah. I mean, I, I had a little list, too. I'll just go down a lot of what you said, um, community building. We kind of need to make a decision what we want to do in that community building. Law enforcement, we did meet with our law enforcement, Public Safety Committee. Historically, we've been doing about ten percent increases and will minimally look at doing that, maybe a little bit more depending.
What, a hundred and thirty now a year?
About, yeah, about around a hundred and thirty, Mayor. Streets and sidewalks come up a lot and streetscape, tree planting, has been brought up to me a lot by a lot of residents. Of course, taking care of employees and retention and, you know, expecting some big insurance costs that we'll have to look at in the budget as well because it's been going up pretty, pretty heavily. So, no, thank you. That's enough. So this, again, was just informal and just want to get some ideas so I can start, when I get the actual numbers in of what we're going to have for our abhorrent taxes and our state taxes, I can start playing with some of these numbers to bring to you. So thank you for that.
So what's the, remind me what the schedule is on the budget?
I'm hoping to have, hopefully maybe by June, a, a draft for you to look at, but no later than July for sure.
All right.
For you to look at.
One other quick comment to council and Paul. When we were doing our library, I spent, took some time on my own to travel around, look at different libraries and get ideas. And one of the inputs I got from the librarians that I went and saw, and I asked them, they said like, how do you get seniors involved? And they said, that's the ten thousand dollar question, because you can have all the programs in the world, but if they don't show up, you end up with an empty building space with nobody to show up. So I don't know if I would mention this to you to push it on you, if the visionary committee is something that they can use, sidestep of that to try and think of, how can we get input from our senior citizens to say, if you did this, I would come. If you do that, I couldn't care less. I'd rather sit home and watch reruns of Wheel of Fortune or something, you know, that kind of thing. I really want them to get involved and to say, yeah, I really enjoy my community, you know? This is what we're here for. Since I've moved into this community, I'm twenty years older, so I'm moving up that ladder myself like all of us do. But if you and the audience have any suggestions, please give us, you know, hey, I heard this, you know, works there. We don't know, we don't, can't try it. But I really would like to have our, you know, we've done a great job, I think, as a, as a town and as a residents of our town to make our town what it is. It's not this group, it's the group out here and on television. So you guys need to step up the plate and give us some ideas that we can implement and say, did we do good? How can we improve better? So just a sidebar on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And just so, just to remind us, council, you know, running programs and doing events is very staff heavily involved. So doing something like that would definitely take another staff position or some type of contract, just even organizing it. And just with the developments and construction projects, I mean, staff is pretty tapped as far as time. So just keep that in mind, you know, one position when you include the benefits and that, a position like that probably would be all general funds. But I will ask April to maybe address that when we get to that next conversation.
Well, there's one thing, too, I know, Paul, the county extension office, they have a massive program that they reach out to from, you know, cooking, sewing, anything in between, gardening goes in there. And their big thing is the same thing, you know? We, we have all this county funded money, money for it, but we just don't get turnout, so.
What about a part-time events coordinator? Is that something that we could discuss at some point? Maybe that would take something off of you from doing all of our town events and that person can be responsible for those things as well as doing the senior things and everything else. Just be something, it'd just be a part-time position, I would think.
I mean, we could definitely take a look at, you know, the, sometimes a part-time position, that revolving door is what you see a lot because they'll move on for the benefits or other things, which then creates more work because now you've got those extra events they're doing if they walk. But I'll take a look at that. I'm not discounting it by no means, but I, as I told council, I probably, I'm in the process kind of reviewing all the staff positions and kind of looking at, I've been reassigning different positions and probably will continue to look at that as well.
The only reason I mention is because it would also take that off of you from having to worry about it.
Sure.
And you up for other things that, you know, you are working on, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to our Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-six. If you would please, Anita.
A resolution of the town of Montverde, Florida relating to community redevelopment pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part three, Florida statutes, the Community Redevelopment Act, making a legislative finding that conditions of blight exist in an area of the town of Montverde, adopting the town of Montverde proposed community redevelopment area report, making certain findings and determinations, finding and declaring a need for the creation of a community redevelopment agency pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part three, Florida statutes, establishing the Montverde Community Redevelopment Area, creating the Town of Montverde Community Redevelopment Agency, providing authorization to proceed with preparation of the Montverde redevelopment plan, declaring the town council to be the agency and providing for an effective date.
All righty. You want to start this? Appreciate it. This is a video that we want to show.
Hope it works.
Hi, I'm Clarissa Howard, Communications Director for the City of Winter Park, and welcome to the second episode of Inside the City. Today, we'll be exploring the CRA. Let's find out if those around town know what a CRA is. Hi. Do you know what a CRA is?
Well, it's a Community Redevelopment Authority, but it takes taxes that are, that are required locally, and it makes the improvements in the downtown area, all the landscaping you see, the brick pavers, the, just the things that make the ambiance of Winter Park what it is. That's what it does.
Thanks.
Or better.
Hi. What do you think a CRA is?
It's a Community Redevelopment Agency, and they encourage or support development in areas that would not develop organically, where they need some assistance.
Hi, everyone. Hi. I was wondering, do you all know what a CRA is?
No. No idea. Can you tell us what it is?
So, Dora, why don't you tell us what a CRA is?
A CRA stands for the Community Redevelopment Agency. It's an area which is defined by Florida statute, and it allows the city to develop an area for both economic and social programs in a defined space around the city. In Winter Park, our CRA was created in nineteen ninety-one, and it's approximately one square mile. Financing for the CRA comes from both city and county tax dollars. Those tax dollars go to fund two types of programs. One is economic and one is social. Those social and economic programs are all laid out in our CRA plan, which is provided through the funding in the Tax Increment Financing District.
Exactly. Now, let me explain to you how tax increment financing works. This sugar cube represents taxes. This cup signifies the taxes that those within the CRA pay at the frozen nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-six CRA base rate. As the years progress and the real property value increases, these increases or tax increments go into the CRA trust fund instead of going to the city or county. The CRA trust fund pays for the programs provided by outside nonprofits, streetscapes, social programs, and community events. From this funding, the CRA has been able to invest in the following projects and improvements. Hannibal Square Heritage Center. Winter Park Welcome Center. New England Avenue Streetscape. Pennsylvania Avenue Streetscape. Hannibal Square Sprayground. Hannibal Square Community Land Trust. Orange Avenue Streetscape. East Morris Boulevard Enhancements. The CRA also funds great events like popcorn flicks, the annual Unity Heritage Festival, St. Patrick's Day Parade, and amazing community organizations such as Wellbird Day Nursery, Winter Park Playhouse, and many Winter Park Community Center programs. Katrina Two Fourteen and Floyd's Barbershop are two examples of businesses that have benefited from the Business Facade Master Grant Program. This CRA program began in two thousand and seven and offers incentives to businesses located in the CRA to improve the aesthetic appearance of their buildings. The Housing Rehabilitation Program is a forgivable zero-interest loan for qualified homeowners. The Microloan Program is a partnership with Seacoast Bank's Socially Responsible Lending Program and offers loans to small businesses within the CRA. And finally, created in two thousand and six, the Summer Youth Enrichment Program has introduced more than seventy high school students to the business world. As you can see, the CRA is an active and engaged agency that invests in the businesses and residents within the CRA area. This improves and enhances the quality of life for the entire city of Winter Park. Thank you for joining us for Inside the City. We'll see you next time.
All righty, um, huh?
Gee whiz.
Well, I saw that and went, oh. But anyway, that really helps deliver the one side of the message. And the one side of the message is what you do with the money. Where it comes from is another part. I was going to let Paul explain that to you all.
Before you go on, hold on a second, because this is, there's one thing that's different here. That's Winter Park. We're Montverde, first of all. Second, that, Winter Park is one, or the CRA, rather, is one square mile out of ten square miles. square miles. What we're proposing here, which we haven't gotten to, is over fifty percent of our town. I'm just going to say that right now. The other difference is, what you just saw was thirty years in the making. And even if Senate Bill twelve forty-two, that's, that's coming as well. But we're not going to have thirty-one years to build all of that. I don't understand the point of that video, other than maybe explaining what tip, what TIP is going to go to, but I think we already did that once, so.
All right, would you mind going through to the money part of it?
Yeah, and if I could, Mayor, if I could introduce April, she's got a little presentation to give, then I can answer the questions on the money part a little bit more.
I'm sorry, April.
And do that presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We wanted to start with going back through what we've researched and how we got to this point, because it's been a while since we did that. In two thousand and twenty-four, Parks Consulting was asked to put together a finding of necessity that's really your starting point to determine if there is a need in the town for a CRA. So, we did that, and as part of that, we identified the area, which is approximately six hundred acres. So, you can't go above eighty percent of your entire jurisdiction. So, we're under that eighty percent mark with the six hundred acres. We identified that County Road four fifty-five is the main road that goes through this area, also known as the Green Mountain Scenic Byway, to just orient where the, the center of that is. So, just to give an overview of the process as well, so the first step is that finding of necessity. You're formally identifying if there are blight conditions in the town. After you've done that, and part of the resolution tonight would be adopting that finding of necessity, then you develop your CRA plan, because you have to have a plan that identifies what projects you're going to do. And then you create the funding mechanism, and so that's the redevelopment trust fund. So, that's where, when they're talking about the increment that goes into the, the special cups, that's where you deal with, what is that increment going to do? What's the budget for it? And how is that going to be used through time? So, that's the entire process. The resolution that you have tonight does everything up to the point of authorizing that the plan be created, and then subsequently the trust fund. So, we look at the purpose, and we've talked about this before, and I think everybody understands it. But of course, the purpose is to, and I even said it in that video, that areas that might not redevelop or revitalize organically, it allows a mechanism where towns can earmark funds that are above that base to have projects that increase different merits of an area, whether it is a facade improvement, street improvement, just ways that you can make the area more pleasant and meet the, the community character. So, we do recognize that there are statutory provisions that have to be followed if you're going to establish a community redevelopment area and/or agency. So, we've listed here some of the items that are stipulated in state law that have to be some of the considerations for what you're finding. You don't have to find all of them. You have to find at least two. So, some of those, if you have a substantial number of deteriorated or deteriorating structures, any conditions that endanger life or property, predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, parking facilities, roadways, unsafe conditions, other improvements that show deterioration. So, our findings are very direct in what we found throughout the town. So, a predominant find is inadequate infrastructure. Many of the streets, as you can see in the picture, do not have sidewalks, or the streets are substandard. There is a lack of stormwater management. You can see there's not a drainage system, or even a culvert system, or swell. So, those are items that you can earmark the increment funding in a CRA to improve those things within the area. There's also inadequate street lighting, and some of the commercial properties, the parking facilities are, are inadequate. So, when you think about when people invest in an area, these are things that make a place enjoyable, make it a place of destination. That's one of the purposes of a CRA, is to encourage those improvements. What we also found is that with the streets, you know, we reference in this the Montford Walks and Complete Streets Plan. This is an older study, an older document that the town did. What we're doing here with calling it out is we're just referencing the types of improvements that could be done within the CRA that are also identified in the Montford Walks Plan. There are areas within that plan that are not proposed to be within the CRA, such Lowry, I think, is, is one of the streets that, you see it in the, the Montford Walks Plan, but it's not part of the CRA, so would not be part of what we'd be proposing for the CRA. The CRA would allow us to fund the street lighting and other amenities within the community as well. We did note here, you know, minimizing crime, that's just something, if you've ever heard of SEPTED, which is a way to design areas so you discourage crime. It's not saying that there is crime, but just there are mechanisms to discourage that as well. Of course, we don't want to leave out possible facade improvements. And I'll, I'll touch on the programming in a couple of slides from now. These findings are what we define as blight, consistent with the statutory requirements. So, we find that there's a need to revitalize the area, and we can do that through the CRA plan that the resolution would authorize tonight to prepare that. So, we list out some potential projects just to think about, and these are things that we would need input if you do choose to establish the CRA. Once we develop a plan and bring it to you, we definitely want to have your input on the potential projects. So, we've worked with the town manager to identify some of these projects which are listed here. So, streetscape improvements, sidewalk and trail, street lighting, playgrounds, wave funding and signage, and stormwater. So, those are some of the infrastructure improvements. We can also add to the list, programming for seniors, programming for different groups. When you think about, how do you get people to invest in a CRA, whether it's upgrading their property, purchasing their property, or just spending time there? One of the things that's recognized is that when programming activates a CRA, that it is something that you can fund with CRA money. So, that is not a problem. This is really hard to read, and we don't expect you to read it. If you just look at the title, however, what we're pointing out is that community redevelopment areas, agencies, CRAs, they, there are a lot that are very effective. And in fact, we're showing you that in Florida, there are two hundred eighteen different CRAs. If you want to, you can go to this slide and click on the links to the different CRAs if you'd like to see any of them. We wanted to call on the bigger slides, some of the existing CRAs that are throughout the central Florida area. So, it's a good point that you make, that some of the CRAs have been around for a really long time. You know, it's the, the overnight success that took thirty years is often what it's called. That, that's just true. But the thing is, is that even if you don't have a thirty-year window, and you, and you still may, you know, that legislation, we're not sure what's going to happen with that quite yet. But even if you have five years, if it's a way to facilitate and fund programming and infrastructure improvements, or really anything you put in the plan within that timeframe, then it's going to benefit the community. You're not asking for additional tax dollars. It just recognizes when there's an increment increase, you can earmark that for these improvements. One of the things we did, and this is something that shows a possibility of how you can realize the projected revenues depending on the increment growth. So, this is a broad spectrum of, starting with three percent, percent, going up to twelve percent growth. So, you know, one that is, is fairly aggressive on the higher end, and one that's conservative on the lower end. So, it really will depend on how that increment grows through time as to how much money a CRA can make. So, we're taking this from year two thousand and twenty-five out to year two thousand and thirty-one, just to give you a snapshot look. And it really could produce funds that can make a big difference in your CRA. So, that is, is what we wanted to present tonight. We, you know, were, were asked to put this together as your consultant. We don't, we're not advocating one way or the other what you do, but just wanted to put the information together for you. The final slide that we have shows a breakdown of if you have an assessed home value of seven hundred thousand. It shows what the increment that could be collected, and in this example, the town manager put together, the hundred thirty-nine represents the properties that could develop at build-out for the Osgood development. And so, what you can see from that is a potential increment collection of four hundred thirty thousand for that one, and then at twenty-five years, the three percent annual value, the increase, that you could be looking at sixteen million five seven seven. So, they're real, the, the point with this, even though the numbers could change through time, is that they are, there's a real value, there are real numbers that can, can help the town. So, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, I just kind of wanted to follow up to make sure everybody understands what the increment is. That's usually where I know a lot of people have some misunderstandings on that. And so, what we're looking at really will be taxes, both the town taxes and the county taxes. And I'll, I'll say I'll use my property example, three years ago, in the county taxes, I was probably paying about twenty-five hundred dollars to the county in property taxes. That's the base rate. So, that still goes to the county. And three years later, I think my taxes are like thirty-five hundred dollars I'm paying to the county. So, that increment is one thousand dollars. That one thousand dollar increment is what will be collected as a part of this TIP that will go into the fund. So, those increases, as it goes up in value on existing homes and new homes. So, that's, that's those increments that we were talking about. So, when you look at the Osgood development that we put up here, we just have raw farmland that's about two hundred bucks an acre or less, actually. And so, that's the base rate that we start with. So, every new home, all the new taxes, when I show you this, this is just the county portion of it, and there's another hundred and eighty thousand in Montford taxes. So, it's really more in the six hundred-plus thousand dollar range every year, once it's on full build-out, that we can potentially collect. So, everybody kind of understand that increment on council? And just, and April, if you've got anything to add to that, please do. I, I know that's one thing I just wanted to share.
I think that was a great explanation.
So, you're saying if we build a hundred and thirty-nine homes in Osgood, and the base rate is two hundred dollars an acre right now, and we're going to build two homes per acre, and each home is an average seven thou, seven hundred thousand, each home's going to produce thirty-one hundred dollars to us from Lake County taxes?
Alone.
Alone.
Plus ours.
So, that's going to be sixty-two hundred dollars an acre that we're going to get from just the Osgood property, coming in around four thirty, without the increments that are going to go up with the town taxes later.
Yeah, every single year, that's correct.
Does any, everybody understand that? So, the, the big, the big bang here is the Osgood property. Right now, they're paying, I think, the whole place, it's a pasture, it's a grazing pasture, if you look it up on taxes. All hundred and eleven acres pay six hundred and something dollars a year. So, that's the base rate, right there.
And really, what it comes down to, the things we can do are in the CRA, is the things that council has been talking about for years, even, you know, going back ten years ago, when the, the walks program was sidewalks, repaving our streets, widening the streets, curb gather, storm, new playgrounds. We don't have an ADA assessable playground, for instance. We need to put an ADA assessable playground. This is a funding source to, to do that. So, those are all things that can be funded. Library programs, we can definitely put programs in there, event programs, all that could be funded with CRA funds.
So, the, the advantage to the other parts of the town that aren't in the red, is the general fund that we would usually spend in the red now can be spent in the rest of the town. So, the rest of the town picks up the money that we would have spent there, because we don't need any more money. We can spend that money in the rest of the town, whatever that is. I haven't even looked at that.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, because as we look at this side of town, we, we see the larger cost for the infrastructure needs. You know, for instance, over on Third and Porter, we just spent forty thousand dollars having to repay that little section of the road. That could have been done with CRA money to expand and redo that road and revitalize it. And now, those funds we spent out of our regular general fund could have gone to something else on the part of town that's not in the CRA.
And I want to point out that he's using seven hundred thousand for his house. If you guys been on Broad Street, on Lake Apaca, a guy's building a pretty big house. It's going to be eight thou, um, wait a minute, it's going to be sixty-three hundred square foot. And he's got it up for sale right now for three point two million. So, the, the Osgood development is going to have thirty-five homes on Lake Apaca. These are the homes that are going to be built on it. So, the seven hundred's low. He's using, he's very conservative on that number. I want to say it's going to be an average nine fifty for the homes, when you average it all out. So, it's actually going to be five hundred, when I did the math, it's five hundred, that's four ninety-something a year, just from the Osgood property. That's plenty of money for this, in that red area. Anybody got any questions? Is it easy to follow? Come on up if you have a question. You can't ask from back there. I can't hear you. Come up here.
Why do you need a CRA if you're getting enough money from taxes?
Well, we're not. What I'm saying is the, the Lake County taxes, if we don't take that thirty-five hundred or thirty-one hundred, that's going to go to Lake County. So, we're not take, we're not charging anybody more money. It's, it's money that usually will go to Lake County if we don't do a CRA for a hundred and thirty-nine homes. What's going to happen now, we put the CRA in place, whatever's built over there, whatever Lake County would get, the town will get. Every single year, I think for twenty-five years is the CRA total, which is way past my lifetime, but.
Are you opening up to the public?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. You got any questions? Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, this young lady's got a question.
Natalie Galligan, one seven zero four one Florence View Drive, Montford. I understand the pros of the CRA and the financial benefits. I'd like to talk about some of the cons of the CRA. Is there a concern with redevelopment of areas that would potentially open the door for eminent domain? Have there been cons that you've witnessed in some of these areas that have implemented the CRAs?
I'm sorry, eminent domain, what do you mean?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Tell me, give me an example. What do you, like, what would you expect? What are you saying? I'm not.
I'm saying, I'm asking actually a couple of questions. Once the CRA is in place, is there a concern, or is there, does that open the door for eminent domain to become easier as classified under redevelopment or improvement in that area of property of?
No, there's not. So, there are different eminent domain, eminent domain provisions and statutes. So, a local government can issue eminent domain on any property, any time, but it has to meet certain criteria. The only thing I've seen with CRAs in the past is if local government acts like a middleman, and a property owner doesn't get to sell their property to a potential developer with a local government stepping in. There's, that's been heavily litigated, though, so it's not something that you see anymore because local governments have gotten in big trouble for doing that. So, that's something that has happened in the past, quite frankly, but you don't see that happen anymore because it's been litigated. Eminent domain in Florida, it, it's, there are very strict provisions, and I'm sure Anita could cover it better than I ever could, but there's nothing that opens up properties to a more severe risk of encountering eminent domain because there's a CRA.
Okay. The other question I have is if the CRA is implemented or... The other question I have is if the CRA is implemented or proceeds, is there oversight going forward as to what specifically the CRA funds are used for?
Can you answer that, Paul?
Yeah. So, the next step, we will put a plan together. In that plan, it'll identify projects. That will be done, such as the streets, if we wanna do programming for seniors, sidewalks, the playgrounds. I mean, that's really the main focus, playground, sidewalk, streets, lighting, that we are focused on, and stormwater. So, those will be discussed. That plan will be approved at the next meeting. And if there's a amendment, everything's done at a public meeting. I believe they have to have one meeting a year minimum to go over everything anyway, and to make any changes to the plan. And how we have it set up is your elected town council will be the CRA board, so the people that represent you, that have to get elected every time, or there's still ones that have to answer to you on the CRA board, which I think gives, gives it a little more emphasis than a, just a board that's appointed.
Well, we're still talking about that, because I don't agree totally...
That's true, I mean, that's the proposed...
It could be a separate board.
I kinda want more residents on the, on the board.
And you can do a little bit of both, or a combination, or something along that line, too.
I, I think we need some residents that live in the CRA on the board.
Okay.
But that's, we gotta talk that through.
Last thing. Lisa, would you be willing to come up with two disadvantages of a CRA?
Do you want me to say them right now, or just...
I would love that, yes.
So, there's really not a disadvantage of CRA. The only thing that I've shared in the past is that sometimes there are relationships, relationship issues between a town and a county in terms of negotiating how the increment, you know, is, is released. It, that's why we have to notify, though, so you know that's something that we have to work with on the front end. You know, the only other, I wouldn't classify it as a disadvantage. It's a very good question that you had about eminent domain or property being taken. You, it, it has happened in the past, but it, it doesn't happen anymore, because local governments have gotten in big trouble for doing that. So, I'm not saying that a local government couldn't do that, but as soon as they do, there's enough case law that it would cost the local government probably more for having done that. So, it's not something that's going to happen. It's, there are enough people that know now, you can't do that to people, and, and law prohibits it. So, beyond that, I can't think of, of other disadvantages, because when a CRA is created, and there's a plan of how investments are gonna take place, then, in some ways, it's even stronger than having a land development code, although that's a regulatory document. The CRA plan is a, a guiding document, but it is tied to a budget. So, it's a way to specifically plan how to accelerate public investment and improvement within that area. It doesn't require anything from private owners, but it provides opportunity to private owners through facade grants and things like that. So, to me, one of the greatest things about them, I know that's what we asked, but just thinking about, like, one, one of the best things is when you have a business owner who, they would love to make their storefront better, but they don't have the funds. But if they can get that help from the local government, that's an awesome thing, that there's, there's money to help people who have already started investing in the community.
Thank you, I appreciate the information.
Natalie, I...
Thank you for the questions.
Yes, I'm sorry.
CRAs, depending on where you're at on affordable housing, CRA is required by Florida law to address affordable housing, or we have to explain why we're not. So, depending on which side of the fence you're on with affordable housing.
Thank you.
Come on up, Mandy.
Randy Elman, 16603 Lowry Road. Let me just preface this real personally, and this is nothing personal, you know, there's nothing personal, like my dad always said, you know, it's not personal, it's just business. You know, so it's not any personal attack. Mayor, why is there such a hard sell on this CRA?
I kinda didn't understand it at first, and then I started understanding the funding and how that worked. And I, I thought, well, if we can get 400, 500,000 just from the disrebuildments going in, why wouldn't we?
Well, you've been all over town the last couple of weeks, you know, trying to convince everybody that this is the, you know, best thing in the world that we could do, you know? And in my experience, you know, when someone puts a real hard sell on, there's an angle to it.
Well, I've been working...
There's a hidden agenda somewhere.
Well, my angle is that the funds we need to do the extra stuff that this town could use is right there.
We got $40 million of grant money that we're having a hard time finding out things to do that, because of Paul's...
Well, remember the grants are...
Thank you, Paul, for, for working on that.
Remember, the grants have to be spent only on what the grants are...
I know.
So, we can't do, you can't help a business that wants to improve their building.
It just seems like you're really pushing this, really hard. And then, the, the presentation that you did was like, wow. I was like, over the top for me. This is not Winter Park. Let me ask, can I call you Anita? Is that okay? Florida statutes are law, right?
Yes, they are.
They're a law, okay. And you're familiar with the spirit of the law, you know, when people say, what is the real spirit of a law?
Okay, yes.
Well, in other words, what the actual content, or, or, the spirit of law means the intent of the law, what the legislature was intending on the purpose of this law that they were passed. Would that be a, an assessment of it?
Yeah, I think there's always legislative intent as to what they're trying to accomplish with any law that's passed.
Okay, okay, yeah. And are you aware that, you know, there's, there's legislation in Tallahassee that to basically do away with the CRAs?
Yes.
Okay. And it looks like it has a good possibility of passing? And I would contend that that's because they've been abused severely, is the reason that they're addressing that.
I think there are certainly instances where they have been abused. I think that we can point to many local ones that have not been abused. CRAs are required to have an independent audit, separate from your town audit, so, you know, you have those funds scrutinized even more. And they've accomplished a lot of good redevelopment. The city of Claremont Downtown has accomplished a lot. But certainly, you can point to others that have abused it. One of the advantages of having a council be your CRA board is you keep the goals and priority of the town council in alignment with the CRA spending. When you have, you know, separate boards, I think you sometimes risk the, the board for the CRA having a different priority list than your council. So, I, I mean, that, to me, is one of the advantages of the council being the sole board. But other CRAs, you know, have their council members, and then they add a business owner within the CRA district, or someone, like the mayor said, who lives in the CRA area, to provide input from somebody in that district. So, that, I think, keeps a check and balance. And with the size of your CRA, I would hope that certainly you would not have abuse.
Yeah, I'm not saying there's some good there, obviously. I think it was established in 1969. So, you know, I think that, my opinion on it is the spirit of, of the law was to develop slum and blighted areas of primarily downtown areas that, and, you know, that were, you know, in disrepair, and falling apart and everything like that. I'll get to why I think this is an abuse of the law. Nobody that I ever met, or talked to, or hear today believes that Montverd is a slum or a blighted area. I've never met anybody say, you live in a slum. And you have to call this a slum and a blighted area to stat, to qualify for a CRA, is the way I read it. And obviously, if you think this is a slum, I don't think you've traveled very much. I've been in some slums, and I've been in some blighted areas. At a special meeting dated January 28th, 2025, I think you were there, and I guess Sean's not here tonight, where you gave the initial presentation of the CRA. And Sean said, and I quote, "We are not saying that there is blight or slum conditions in Montverd." And the town can look that up, it's on the website, and I, I recommend you look it up. You know, it starts around 20 minutes in, and really, you need to look at the whole meeting, which I attended it, and it's very opening, especially our mayor's comments. Some will say, everybody has done it, or is doing it, so why shouldn't we do it? Well, my mom and dad taught me that just because everyone else is doing something that is wrong, I should not go along with it. They taught me to do the right thing, even, even if it wasn't popular. The money. We have plenty of money with the grants that Paul has been able to acquire for us, the new library and the other projects that have helped our town, and I thank Paul for that. Thank you publicly for it, I really appreciate it. And I think the town appreciates that. We have plenty of money going into the town with all the new taxes, with the high-end houses that are going to be built on Osgood, Bella Colina, and not to mention Willa Ridge. So, there's a lot of money coming into our town with new taxes, city taxes. And then, there is the thing about trying to add, this is where I wanted to get to, trying to add Osgood into the CRA map. Really, open dirt, slum, I think that's probably why they're addressing that, that I think that's been highly abused. The future million-dollar houses that are gonna be built on those properties, how ridiculous and wrong. It seems like it's only about money. And in closing, don't put a, Mayor, look at me, don't put a slum tag on this town, you know, on half our town, don't put that tag on there, just for future money. Words mean something, people care, and I care. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yes.
Marta Wodzicka, 16632 Montverd, Morningside Drive. So, I have a couple of questions for all of you. And the first one is, what safeguards are in place to ensure that tax dollars are not used to benefit private developers at the expense of existing residents? So, that's my question number one.
Can you answer that, Lisa?
Glad to. Really, the CRA plan will do that, because it will call specific projects. So, any money that's spent out of the CRA has to be a program, or program or a project that's identified within that CRA. So, if there's a facade program, then that could benefit a private business, so if somebody has a coffee shop, and they wanna redo their front, then there would be an application process, and it would have to be matched against what's in the CRA plan.
Okay, thank you for that. Another question is, I was very excited when I heard about possibly getting more sidewalks. I think that was one of the things that I may have even contacted the mayor about years ago, a couple of years ago. So, I thought that would be a great benefit to all of us, if we could connect certain parts of town to downtown and so on. Now, the way that this resolution is written, it gives all of the power to the council, and I think Anita, you recommended that that would be the right thing to do. I happen to disagree, and I think that, I would like to propose that the council actually looks at appointing independent oversight board, if we are going to move forward with this, instead of retaining full control over it, so that residents of this town have something to say to, and not only the council.
Yeah, like I was saying, I personally wanna put residents on the, the board that runs this.
I agree with you, Mayor, on that one.
Yeah, I'd rather not the whole council do it, maybe a couple council members, and that's it.
So, would you maybe recommend that it is rewritten, so that it is based on the residents as opposed to the council?
Well, we have to agree, all of us have to agree, but that's what I'm putting down the table, you know? That's what I would like to see.
I, I'm not 100% sure, maybe Anita, you can clarify. I think that was one of the, the things that they were betting back and forth in Tallahassee, whether or not to allow, you know, an outside committee staff, I won't say staff committee, or to make it to council. And I, I agree, I think it should be of the citizens that live in the CRA, for what it's worth. But Tallahassee, have they made a final?
There's not been a final determination. Currently, you are allowed to have an independent board, or you can have the council sit, or you can have a combination.
And maybe finally, or my last comment, I agree with my predecessor. I don't think that our town, or anything in the area, should be considered blight, and part of your report has a couple of mistakes in it. So, if you could look at page 19 and 20, some of the rubrics there, they're pointing at different years than what the items listed there are. And majority of the items that are called out have to do with tall grass. I would, I would make it very difficult for me to consider tall grass blight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marta. Hey, anybody else? Come on up, Mike.
Mike Witten, 17635 Broad Street. I think if you look right across from cows, I would call that blighted. You know, that's been like that for quite a while. I mean, it's, 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 it's bad. If I look at my street on Broad Street, yeah, Joe, you talked about a 3.25 million. Look at the street, the street from apron to apron in front of my house is 18 foot six. You know, where's the money gonna come from to widen that to 24 foot and put sidewalks? So, I do see a potential for the CR maybe bringing some money and getting funds to do this. We have no speed limit signs on my street, we have no kids playing, I've got young kids living right next door, you know? Once this boat ramp opens up right there, and I'm not gonna talk about that tonight, it's really been fully funded, there's gonna be more and more traffic right there. You know, a lot of people think I live on the wrong side of the railroad, but I want some of this to come to my community on Broad Street and Temple, you know, to address some of these problems right here. So, once that boat ramp is done, you're gonna see an increase in boat traffic right there. And the boats coming down here right now, you know, they're not doing the speed limit. So, you know, I need some help, and this money here may be able to do it. You know, I consider my street a blighted street. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hey, Paul, while, while they're coming up, Paul, how much does it cost for a speed limit sign?
Well, I'll bring the, well, council will be talking, not right now. Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, Harun Rashid, 17424 Fourth Street. Been a resident for now...
Can everybody hear?
Yeah, I'm sorry, been a resident now for about two and a half years here. Love the community, love, love what you guys are doing. Question to you is, when I'm looking at these blight ordinances, it kinda reminds me a little bit about my previous places where I've been, and I've been under HOAs and whatnot. So, it sounds to me like some of this is going to become a regulatory body as well, or it has the potential of becoming a regulatory body. And many of us moved here because we didn't want to be in HOAs. So, what sort of hard stops are there, or regulations that potentially you guys can pass, or it's already incorporated into the ordinance that prevents this from becoming an overbearing HOA-type regulatory board?
Can you answer that? Thank you.
So, the ordinance that is tied to any action establishing the CRA would only be about establishing the CRA. It's, there's no regulatory authority that a, a community redevelopment agency has. Your regulations are still your land development code. So, that's a separate entity that would change any of that. The CRA plan only deals with proposed projects or programs that could happen in the CRA. It doesn't require anyone to follow certain regulations like the land development code does. So, nothing changes that.
All righty, thank you very much. Anybody else?
John Orlano, 17531 Conner Road, 455. So, I'm not sure I'm... So I'm not sure I'm for or against, but based on what I'm hearing, it basically take the county funds that we normally give to the county and put it back to the, our town to make the decisions on where those funds are being used.
Exactly.
So we're, no one's paying any extra money. So if there's not really a con, and I really haven't heard one yet, I'm not so sure why we wouldn't do it.
Well, I, I think that's your point. Anybody else? Come on up.
Brian Rubio, one six five four eight. I guess I'll kind of start where he left off. So the whole premise of this is to initially go into an area that is designated as blight, to fix it up, right, spend money on sidewalks, lights, make it look pretty, right? That's the whole purpose of it. And in theory, you know, and I assume this is when the CRs were created, like in theory, this is what it's supposed to do, is raise property values, right? Property values, well, what comes with raising property values? Well, your increase in tax assessment value goes up, right? In theory, this is how it's supposed to work, right? Or at least that's what I got from it and all the research that I've done. So, you know, is there a con? Yeah. Are you going to be able to see it, like, you know, black and white? No. You know, if it works and the property values increase, your taxes are going to increase for the homes that are going to fall in that. So I just wanted to kind of pick up, you know, where he left off on that. So here's something else. Just because we can doesn't mean we should, right? There's two hundred and eighteen CRAs all over Florida, right? There's a handful of them that have been investigated for mismanagement of funds, right? Same story straight across the board in some of those. You know, as for the reason why this CRA topic didn't come up a year, two years, three years, four years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years ago, I don't know. I haven't, I guess, been here that long. And then all of a sudden, it comes up. Maybe it has something to do with the bill that is, you know, being looked at tomorrow by one of the committees? I don't know. So I just find it kind of strange that this just all of a sudden happened. In addition, the report to designate or to find blight areas was done by Parks Consulting Services. I feel like there's a conflict there, right? He is the District Two Commissioner. He owns Parks Consulting LLC. I think that there's a conflict there. You know, I think that even though this doesn't meet the requirement to bid it out because of the amount that you're paying for this report, it should still have been bid it out to someone else. Because again, I feel like there's a conflict there. Let's see. Oh, so back to the CRA, you know, what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to sidewalks, lights, streets, you know, pretty it up, look, you know, make it look nice. Great. I'm pretty sure that if you start putting a lot of lights, right, streetlights, in all these places that don't have streetlights, you know, it's gonna create a lot of light pollution, right? I'm sure some of these houses that are very close or probably at the actual limit of the setbacks, and they have streetlights, you know, that are going to basically be over towering their house, I'm pretty sure they're not going to want that, you know, every single night to have streetlights, you know, the light coming in through their windows. I think that the CRA findings is, is, it's almost like an overreach. They're overreaching, you know, calling some of these, you know, areas blighted, tall grass. You know, it's one of those things that is, you know, anyone could look at something and say, you know, yeah, that to me is blighted, you know, and I think that's what kind of happened in this report. So I, I think again, because we should doesn't, doesn't, because we can't doesn't mean that we should. Also, the whole committee setup for the actual CRA, and this is where, you know, some of the CRs have been investigated. If the council appoints people, right, great. The mayor could appoint two friends of his to be on this, you know, committee, and so can you, and you know, I'm sure, you know, you guys know a lot of people. So to me, there's really no, still no checks and balances there. For the council to control that fund, you know, I still think there should be checks and balances there. The mayor did say earlier in this meeting that what we're going to do with all the additional money that we're going to have available for the rest of the town, I don't know. So if we don't have something that we need to spend the money on, now with the money, we're going to have to find things to do. That to me sounds like there's going to be a lot of pet projects all over town. That's what that sounds like to me. So those are the main points that I wanted to bring up. You know, I personally don't think this is a good idea. I think ultimately what we have now, what Montford looks like now, is what makes Montford. The second you start putting all these streetlights, putting sidewalks, we're just going to be another Claremont, another Groveland, another Mineola. I don't think that this CRA has a place here. It may have a place in, I don't know, Fort Lauderdale, Tampa, you know. Those areas may benefit from this. I don't think our town does. So I just want to leave that, you know, as my last point.
I have a question for you, actually, as a Realtor. So I'm asking Brian a question because he's a Realtor, and Mr. Mayor, you can actually, you can chime in on this. Is there any depreciation in an item that's in a blighted area, number one? And number two is, the responsibility to disclose, as a Realtor, that a house you're selling or purchasing would be in a blighted area?
If something materially affects the value of a property, it should be disclosed. I'm not an attorney, but it should be disclosed. If, if you hide something, you know, that affects the value of the house, yes, it should. So let's say CRA goes into play, a bunch of stuff starts happening. For some reason, it doesn't get the response of the increased values, and the values drop, and people are starting to sell, right? Well, what's the reason? You know, well, I think the seller would have an obligation in that scenario to say something. Well, guess what? We were deemed blighted under the Florida statute, and these developments are creating a lot of havoc with construction, construction trucks, you know, tearing out roads, you know, delayed times to work and school, and they're probably going to want to disclose that. Obviously, we live in Florida. It's a, you know, Sioux state, so, you know, I think that if it does affect the value of the house, yes. You know, ultimately, the seller should disclose.
Well, I've been a Realtor twenty-five years, and I've done, I don't know, a thousand more appraisals. So I know appraisers. And I called them, and they told me they'd never even heard of a CRA. So somebody that's doing appraisal on your house doesn't even know what an CRA is, so it doesn't affect it.
So I'll give you an example, right? If there is a main road behind of a house, and then the appraiser goes and does an appraisal on that house, that appraiser has to make an adjustment to the, to the comps, because there is a main road. It creates, obviously, noise, right? You know, you're going to see cars, buses, trucks, you know, and I've seen that adjustment. I've seen adjustments for other things outside of the property itself, because they're close to, you know, areas that are in distress. An appraiser, technically, based on the appraisal use pap manual, they could make that adjustment. So if, if there's a negative implication because of the CRA, an appraiser could make that market adjustment, you know, because of the area itself, so. But don't take my word. You can review the use pap. That's the appraisal manual, so.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Come on up.
Randy Evans, one six three five five, Florence Oak Court. This seems to be all about the Osgood property. Do the developers of the Osgood property know what you're planning? I know they're not here. I understand that, and that's their responsibility. What are they going to do when they find out? Are we good?
Build houses.
Well, I mean, what if they don't like the concept and sue us?
Well, for an example, and this I didn't know either, and I hate to get into this story, but I'll do it really quick. Hills of Mineola, Hancock, five sixty-one, all that new development there. Mineola, before the Turnpike exit was there, all that was fields, which a lot of people in here know that. That was the CRA. Put in a CRA, I think it was oh six or oh eight, something like that. All those houses are in a CRA right now, all of them. So obviously, developers building a CRA.
Well, and Randy's right. That doesn't make it right.
Well, what I'm saying is that they, they built homes to sell to make a profit. They didn't build them to give them away, so they're happy to build there.
Well, I, I guess I was thinking a little differently. What if, what if the developer of Osgood thinks that you've got a deal with us, and now you all are changing the deal, and he sues us? I mean, we're going to have expenses at least to be sued, and maybe we win.
Have you ever seen anybody get sued?
I've not. I mean, I've really never seen CRAs come with a negative connotation either. It's usually, like, people get excited that the local government's reinvesting. I would just point out, too, that there's a big difference between the definition of blight and slum. Statutes are very clear that you find, have a finding of blight or slum. You're not defining both the same. So the blight are conditions that need improvement in an area. When we're talking about streets and sidewalks, those usually create an advantage to property owners within a CRA.
Well, so you're saying that you don't have to have blight and slum?
Correct, sir. It's just a blight or slum. And we did not find slum in our report. We only found conditions of blight that meet the statutory definition of blight.
I can't challenge you because I can't remember, but I thought that the statute required slum and blight.
No, there's an or, there's an or statement.
Okay, I, I had written the council persons my feelings about this, and they've been expressed by Randy and, and others. But I do want to just highlight one paragraph that I had written to you. According to the twenty twenty U.S. Census, Montford is again the wealthiest community in Lake County, with a median household income of eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, twenty-six percent higher than Howie in the Hills, the next highest median household income community. And with the median property value of three hundred and two thousand dollars, nineteen percent higher than Mount Dora, municipality with the second highest median property value. There's just not, there's something that is, is just, well, dishonest may be too strong a word. There's something deceitful. That may be too strong a word, too. I just, I just, counsel, I just don't like it.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. Anybody hasn't been up that wants to talk to the council?
Grant Roberts, one six zero zero four, Ridgewood Avenue. You know, as a small business owner, anything that we can use to get money for a small business is very helpful. Driving through town, it's hard to say that our downtown district or commercial district is appealing for a business owner. If we could use this money to improve that, I mean, I could be on board for that. But like Joe was saying, you know, the timeframe, if there's going to be a timeframe on this, maybe we should be interested in, you know, looking elsewhere for the funds to do that. But as long as it's able to do, do what, you know, you guys are saying it can accomplish, I think we could use the money in that area, just in the commercial district alone.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Aaron Wattsworth, one seven six four seven, Ninth Street. I think a lot of great comments have been made tonight, both pros and cons. I think what I have a question about is how would the CRA, with the ability to handle facade upgrades, help us deal with the dilapidating buildings that are in our downtown core that are owned by an owner who refuses to do anything with them? So whether you've got funds available, they have to be willing to do something in the first place. They won't fix them up. They won't rent them out. That's, what do you do about that? So any thoughts on that? How does this help, or does it?
When you have those situations, that's a really good point, with property owners who aren't interested in doing any upgrades regardless of what funding mechanism is there. Really, that's where you marry code enforcement with CRA opportunities. So CRA opportunities are not meant to be punitive. They're meant to be an opportunity. So you really, when you have that situation, you have to rely on the code enforcement mechanism to deal with the punitive aspect of it while the CRA opportunities are still there. So it's a reality of whether you have a CRA or not, that there are going to be property owners that do that in a local government. But what a CRA recognizes is that there are people who do want to take advantage of the opportunity to make improvements. So it's really something that, in a way, is mutually exclusive because you have those situations, even if you don't have a CRA. The CRA provides opportunity where people want to take advantage of it and work with the city to do that. But a lot of CRAs do work with code enforcement as well. So sometimes it's an education component that, did you know that there are possible funds that you could use? And then maybe someone will turn around and say, okay, I might be interested in doing that.
Okay, so that leaves me with a second question. If code enforcement can actually take actions, why haven't those actions already been taken over the last five years with those two buildings? Doesn't have to be answered now. It's just a stated question, so. The other comment I had was regarding the way, if this does move forward, and if you guys approve it, when it comes down to setting up who the agency and the people in the agency are, I would be in support of the agency being almost, if not entirely, staffed by people who either own businesses or live within the CRA.
I agree.
Thank you.
All righty. This is fun. Come on up.
Len Boris, one seven six oh four, Longridge Drive. Just to make, add on to some other comments that I heard. Some people may not want the development, the traffic, and all the things that go along with it. My background, I was a firefighter in the city of Philadelphia for twenty-nine years. Blight and slums went together. They were usually synonymous, and when people look at something, look at those words, they generally mean the same thing. I don't know where everybody else came from, but ghetto is another word that you would hear. If you live in a designated blight area, and real estate agents just commented about that, if I'm looking at a house, man, that's ching ching, that's a blighted area, they can offer a little bit less. Second thing is, when my insurance company look at me living in a blighted area, raise my rates, drop my insurance for whatever, just because of this designation that we have to have to get a CRA. I don't want to live in a blighted area, and like I already said, Montford is not a blighted area. Your one slide, I didn't get to read it all, again, sitting in the back. It says there's a substantial number of dilapidated structures. How many is that? I, I mean, other than the one across from Cows, the pink one next to Cows, and then the house in the corner you can't see because of the trees. I mean, I ride around here a lot, and I ride my bike around a lot, and I don't see a lot of dilapidated structures other than those few in the center of town. And not everybody wants to be, live in a place of destination either, okay? It's nice having a pizza place, but, you know, the sandwich shop left, Green Mountain left, because we're a small town. You know, twenty-one hundred people, not big enough to support a business, and you're not moving here to have businesses, okay? That property's, you know, maybe a sandwich shop, an ice cream store like we had, seem to be going okay. Cows seems good. Pizza's pretty good. I like it. Strombolas are real good, too. But, you know. Using the CRAs to repave the streets are fine. I live in Longridge, and Saturdays and Sundays, it's like a racetrack out there. And I see the car, I walk my dog, and I see the cars. I see the Montford school buses. Ain't nobody doing thirty miles an hour coming down that hill from Fosgate stop sign. You know, I actually watched, and I did it, I got up to forty-two miles an hour with no gas. I just left the stop sign and cruised down the hill. It was over forty miles an hour. So you have to basically ride your brakes coming down. It'll stay under thirty. Not commenting about the speed limit. That's what it is. I like it. It's good, and I try to stay under thirty. But we were talking about money for police and, you know, the FHP. Maybe we can get them out. I haven't seen them out there in a weekend. And the people in our development complained one time because the cop was parked right outside our development, tore up the grass when he pulled out to chase people down the street. Cost of doing business. I didn't care, you know. Wake over it, grass will grow back. And if they're in there... And if they're in there slowing people down, that's a good thing. And I appreciate that. And, you know, if we can get them out there a little bit more on the weekends, when it's the motorcycle racetrack coming up the hill and, you know, and all the rest of the stuff that, you know, that goes on there. And to go back to something else about, somebody mentioned the money that Paul got. Are we still going to have the septic system lottery for the advanced septics? Is that?
We're talking about a CRA.
Yeah, I know, but I'm curious. I want to know because that was talked about. Somebody mentioned that before.
We're working on it.
Okay, all right. That's what I said. I didn't know that. That's why I was asking. And how do the populations of all these two-hundred-and-eighteen CRAs that we see in Florida, I looked at that list. A lot of them are big cities, major cities, large areas with more than two or three thousand people living in them. And there's more of a chance for development and the improvements if you have the people that will go, will go to these places. Do any of those places in that list, do their populations mimic ours?
Oakland.
Yeah, okay, Oakland was the only one that I thought of, too, when I saw that sign. You know, Windermere I thought of, because I don't know how big Windermere is, but, you know, it varies. Leesburg, entire Lake County, Kissimmee, O-C, you know, all that list are all major cities that can support development and support a vibrant downtown area. Again, we're limited in the size of our downtown area that the video that we saw, you know, Winter Park's a pretty good-sized downtown area. We don't have the size to put in anything more than a sandwich shop, a pizza place, an ice cream store. And what else are we going to put in there to encourage people to make this a destination? Not, it's not. It's a sleepy town, bedroom town, whatever you want to call them, you know. My wife works in Orlando. We picked this area because my son lives over in Minneola. It's the best place to be. So that's where we went. And matter of fact, he sold me my house when I moved in ten years ago.
I did?
Yeah.
Wow.
So the point I'm making is that while the Community Redevelopment Agency is, appears to be good, and I like the idea of the, getting the funds to us instead of sending them to Lake County, you know. But as pointed out, just right before me, richest county in the, or city in the county. And, you know, how much do we need? Do we need all that? And, you know, I mean, I, there's no sidewalks in my development. It's fine. And a lot of developments don't have sidewalks. And, you know, they appear to be coming to the downtown area, which, you know, that's okay. People want sidewalks. I'm okay with that. Okay, that's all my stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I do a good job?
Huh? Still here?
Okay. All righty, anybody else? Come on up. Huh?
I know, I'm impressed. So Zach Zummwalt, one seven five five seven, County Road four fifty-five. So about, I've been here about five years. I bought, I did buy a blighted house. It was Franklin House.
Sure do.
It was just a concrete, it is a concrete bunker. It was made by a war veteran. There is rebar, rebar. All my doors inside are concrete framed. That's it. It's, is, it's going to be that way forever.
That's Neil Smith's old house.
Yeah, that's right. Even the ceiling is concrete. I really can't do much to it. But it's taken me five full years to make it from a shell to safe. So now it's comfortable. All the wiring was eighty years old. The pipes were eighty years old. The roof pushing it. The septic tank, probably original. So I'm glad I got a new septic tank and everything. But that caught, in total, the house has cost me well over a hundred thousand dollars. And why I'm in a slum, I mean, you can probably understand where I'm going with this. I took a very blighted house, put all my energy, all my blood, all my money into. And now they're pulling me down. Now I'm a slum. I'm from Baltimore City. We all know. We can all tell you what slums are. But that's just pretty much my, my commentary is why am I being forced to suffer after spending so much? Just making this house nice, just to be brought down again. So, yeah, please take all this stuff into account, but I'm not for this thing at all. But thank you.
All righty, thank you. All right, anybody else? All righty. Come on.
Marta Wadyszkow, one six sixty-two, Morning Side Drive. And if this was already answered, I apologize. But my question is, why did we include the undeveloped private land in, in the area that was selected? Is there, why did we include the undeveloped private land, the Os, yes, the Osgood property? Was there a reason for including that property?
Yeah, it's where the most revenue's going to be generated out of.
Okay, thank you.
That one property alone is going to generate five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to council. Anybody on council want to talk?
Yeah, I got a quick, quick question, and maybe you, between you and Paul. Just to go through the, the list that had to, to be approved for, for two things. Had to qualify for, for two things to, to get the designation, to get the CRA, right?
The blight, yes.
Yeah, okay, and the whole list is A through O, A through O here, correct?
I, I don't have the statute in front of me, but that sounds about right.
Well, I'm just curious of, of, everything on the list, how, how many of these did we find in Mountverde? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. The, within the report, there is a table that identifies, and we were, you know, we didn't put addresses in there just to be sensitive to individual properties. But those conditions are found throughout the area. So a lot of times when you're talking about the blight conditions for roads, sidewalk, streets, that's not going to be tied specifically to a property, but it'll be through a corridor, if you will. The table does provide individual, specific situations that meet the definition of blight. So I don't know the total number. So on page eighteen of Appendix A one, it lists the code enforcement history. And so those are numbered, and you said there's seventy-six? Okay, so there's seventy-six with that.
And every, all of these code, code enforcement violations would fall under CRA?
Yes, all of these properties are specifically CRA properties.
I mean, for the violation would qualify.
Is your question really related to the statutory criteria? Which ones? Because if you look at page eight and nine of the report with the findings to meet the definition under the statute, you have to have at least two of those factors.
Correct.
And so they pointed out in their report, factor A, which is the defective or inadequate street width and layout. Factor C was the layout in relation to size, adequacy, access, and usefulness. Three was D, there's unsanitary and unsafe conditions because of the deteriorating building, stormwater runoff issues, lack of sidewalks for a safe environment for walking. E, deterioration of site or other improvements. And then F was the pattern of code enforcement. So they included, it appears to be, one, two, three, four, five of the factors, and you need at least two.
From the entire list?
Yes, ma'am.
And we covered two. The second question just left my head, but it will come back, so I will pass at the moment.
All righty, anybody else?
Yeah, I have lots of questions, as you can imagine here. All right, if you can go to chart, or Appendix A one, the code enforcement history. Pull that up on the screen for the residents to see this.
I don't think that's on our PowerPoint. Was it?
Yeah, it was up there. Page eighteen. Sorry, I should have just said page eighteen. Yeah, not that video again, please.
It's not on our PowerPoint.
It's not, okay. All right, well, Marta had mentioned this one, and I'm going to touch on this. This was a good find. But in here, I was looking at, I went through this, and the last presentation that we had, it had, you had code complaints, and I get it, you have to meet two of these five items. The issue I have is when we're sort of, to me, it looks like we, I don't say making up some of these code complaints, but the case numbers are incorrect, which means I'm looking at faulty data by this. So for example, in the presentation I had at the last meeting, you had, and I'm just going to give you the code complaint numbers. It's not up there. It's not there, but it's one thirty-eight, one thirty-three. Those were both on Lowry. That's not even in the CRA. Then you had a code complaint number forty-one. That one, which I'm not sure is why it's in our system, but that's from Kalina Bay, so that's not even in our town.
You're not talking about in the report that's in front of you, right?
This was in the report from the last one when we.
In the draft, when we were just doing initial draft, yeah. So that's been corrected because I thought that was inaccurate. We put it in there as well.
Fast forward to this report. I'm now looking at a case number. And as, as you know, in our code complaint, each complaint has a unique ID. So we have case number two nine eight, two nine eight, two nine eight, three different code complaints. Then we have case number three four four, three four four, three four four, again, three code complaints. Essentially, we have twelve unique code complaints in here. And again, I understand you had a couple pages of these, so I, personally, I'd like to actually see them all, but I'm, I'm going to hold it up so you can see, just so I know where I'm looking at. So you have a whole page of code complaints, but of these, only twelve are actually unique. So to me, it's just, it's faulty data that I'm looking at here. That's just first thing I'm noting on this.
Is that a question you want me to address?
If you would like, yeah.
So I think the nature, so this is not data that Parks Consulting created. It's data that would have been provided by the town. So I don't think it's false data. Regardless of if a case number is incorrect, the item is still there. And I know from code enforcement citations, often you'll have a case number for a property, and it can have several different code items within that one citation.
Should the code complaint be in the CRA?
They are on the report you're looking at, correct?
Yes.
No, there was one on here that was for Lowry. There's one. I, I.
So I think that I get your.
One on here for Lowry.
In all due respect, I do get your point with that. So humans make errors, right?
Right.
That, the thing that I would point out is that if there's one that's wrong, the rest of the list is not, then I think that it still stands that this is valid data to qualify the area for CRA.
The issue that I, I just, the issue I have is that you technically can't have three code complaints with the same case number in our system.
Yes, you can.
I looked them up. I didn't see those.
Yes, you can.
And I look them up. They're all different IDs. Each one of these are different IDs in our system.
But it's a code case number when we take it to the special magistrate. So it's the, if it's the same property with multiple code cases, it's going to be the same case number. So when you're looking at the second one, the first one, you got twenty-three, two nine eight, twenty-three, two nine eight, twenty-three, two nine eight. Those are all three different violations related to the same property.
So it's in, because when I look at the system, the code complaint system online, they are not.
These are the code case numbers that we use with the special magistrate for filing in the electronic system. It's probably not what you may see on the system, but this is how we track the system. So it's related to the same property.
That would make sense to me, but I, you know, I'm just basing on what I can verify.
And if you notice, those three kind of go together because they went in and tore the land apart, disturbed the trees, then they put any erosion controls up, then it followed best management practices. So they're all separate violations, but related to kind of the same property incident.
All right, I'll, there was one still from Lowry. I, I, I have enough other markups on this paper that it's not showing. But there was one on here. It's a regardless. I get what they're saying over here as well. So one of the other questions I had is, on that list of all of the cities, not, not the big list, it was the cities around us that had that one, is there any reason you don't have Groveland up there?
There's no reason why we don't have Groveland there. It's just a sampling of different jurisdictions. This by no means is an exhaustive list, but this just gives an idea of other areas that, or other jurisdictions that have CRAs.
Part of me was curious as to why we didn't. So I, of course, I did look up what Groveland had did with their CRA. And Groveland has used their CRA resources to help developers cover upfront costs like impact fees if they built affordable units or mixed-income projects inside a CRA boundary. They also obviously, you know, use it for sewer and water improvements. But the main one was that first one I had mentioned that I saw. And that, that again, I would just be wondering why I wouldn't be in there, so that's why I looked that up.
And that probably would make sense for Groveland because they have a heavy manufacturer base and no workers. So that would probably be important for them in that area.
CRA makes sense in a lot of areas, but here. Finally, I guess, let's go over Osgood because that's the cash cow. And to me, that's the main issue. Everything else that I have here is, you know, I can pick apart different things on that report. I have pages. I am curious, I guess, before we go, how many homes, did you ever get the home count for us? For how many homes are in the CRA?
The total homes, I don't have that.
It was just, I counted about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven homes.
So that, that data, what we did find is the, the number of parcels that are within the CRA. Because some of them are vacant, so, you know, future time, they could be a residence. But the CRA applies to other properties besides just residential. So I'm not sure that, that that number would identify anything because even if you're a commercial property, you would still be part of the CRA.
Again, I counted buildings. So again, my number, I'm not, wouldn't swear that my number's right, but I went literally building by building and counted them all. So it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven. It was just for our information. I know we were supposed to get that at this meeting, but I wanted to, just in case we didn't get it. There you go, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven. Fifty percent of our town is going to be flagged as blight, another issue I have with this whole thing. So back to Osgood. It's, it's surprising that nobody is, back in two thousand and two, Panama, I have to read some of this because this is a lot. But two thousand and two, Panama City Beach CRA was actually sued for using essentially dirt and field in our CRA. And it went on, the first case, it actually, they lost. The second case, they went to the Supreme Court, Florida Supreme Court, they did win. The difference between them and us is it took, well, one took on the Supreme Court, so obviously a huge cost to that particular city, something that we could not afford to do if a resident decided to sue us for something like that. Second, the other difference is, Osgood is not just dirt. It is already, they're already going to be building. And if it wasn't for Osgood, I don't think we'd be discussing the CRA. I mean, is there any doubt? I mean, again, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned adding Bellicalina into this, and, you know, that's on record for that. This is a money grab to me. And I don't, I sort of agree with some of our residents who did mention that this is, just because we can, doesn't mean we should, and I do see the benefits to a CRA. I honestly do. It's just not for us. And my concern is Bel, is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, is Osgood. And, I mean, I'm surprised that you had, you had said that there's, you don't know. There's several lawsuits with CRAs. I mean, it, I mean, that's, but anyway. And again, I have a, I guess I'm going to wrap it up. It's obvious, but, you know, the CRA is, it has to be about fixing the town we have. You know, it's, it's not about funding new developments, and that's where we're at. That's what we're discussing. We're discussing, if it isn't Osgood, if we don't put Osgood into this, this is not really worth it to go forward. And I do see Osgood as a legal challenge to us down the road. And it may not be tomorrow, it may not be later, but, and I know you had mentioned Minneola. Thankfully, they were never sued for that. I mean, I, I don't want to. I mean, I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna, they're a neighbor city to us, I don't wanna talk negative about them, but that's on, you know, it's on their residents to do their own research. If they wanna file lawsuits and file complaints, they can, and it's not that hard to do, but I can see this, this is not what the intent of the CRA was for, it was not for dirt. Well, a P D.
All righty. Thank you very much.
And counsel, real quick, can I just kind of play the, kind of getting lost a little bit in the conversation, I do, there is some nexus of that interconnected of the Osgood property and the rest, but just besides the revenue source of it. As you call, when the Osgoods come forward, there was a lot of the neighbors, obviously, with the traffic crap and the lack of street safety, we heard that. This particular area, really, why it was chosen, you have literally everyone, these neighborhoods, it has probably approached someone on the council, I know they approached me, from Gladys to Broad Street to Temple, about the road conditions. We've heard lake come in, we're doing some improvements to the lake, so we, we have no sidewalks in the area, there's very few areas with storm, we have erosion control issues going on in there, some of that's gonna get fixed by grants, grant that, and, you know, we have that, but there's some things that we can't fix with those grants. All that is going to be multiplied once Osgood develops. So, they're kind of a part of this nexus that bleeds into all these developments. There may be a need for a roundabout at the corner, some part of downtown, I'm not saying to do that, but, you know, we may find a traffic situation where that may make sense in the future to get traffic flow in that via CRA project possibly. But that's really why we looked at these areas, we're looking at the areas, you know, even up the ones that kind of come from Fosgate down to Lake Florence, you know, there's, we know there's water erosion issues there, there's some street issues and sidewalk issues. Mr. Hurdle talked about the sidewalk connection where he sees people walking on four-fifty-five, so those are just all funding sources, but those sources do get a little bit more multiplied on this town once Osgood develops, and I think that in my mind, that's why they're kind of a piece of the puzzle in addition. So, just, I don't think it's just not that, when we looked at that, because they approached me like, you know, what areas, when we were looking, this makes sense, and it's like, where do we got the biggest needs in town? And as a manager, I look, we've got two-point-eight-three mills, like I had a council that never wants to raise taxes, neither do I, and every year, we struggle to, this year's the most we ever put in our budget for roads, it was a hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars, and you can't do more in a, in a small little section of repave, let alone expand the road with that kind of money. We just don't have the revenue to massively go in there and fix those, we can do little pieces at a time. Yeah, I mean, even Mag Terrace, we've had people come up for Mag Terrace who want their road repaved over there, and they're the best road in town, but it's twenty-five years old.
I, I-
So, I'm not, this is kind of what they're saying, I'm just saying, I want you to understand the nexus, there was some plot behind it.
I just, I don't think there's anybody in this room that would say that Osgood is the cash cow. I'm just being honest.
I'm not saying it's not, but I'm just saying it's not that alone.
So, you're saying that if we don't do it, there's a really good chance we're gonna need to raise the mill rate quite a bit?
If you wanted to redo roads, I'm not gonna do that, but if the council want to redo roads, we have no mechanism to do that. I mean, even before we talked about the CRA, we mentioned about the library and other fund, it's like, wow, you know, it's hard, you know, that would be our whole entire increase that we're gonna probably get this year from our CPI, so it's tough to budget.
So, the ship's sinking, let's throw, we're gonna raise taxes, that's where we're at? I mean, come on.
That's not what I said, Mr. Mayor.
That's what you said, and you didn't say that, someone else.
And that's not what he said. But the reality, at some point, the roots will come home, and we're gonna have roads that fall apart, and we're gonna have to find a way to fund them, and we don't have a lot of tax revenue. All the revenue that we get in from the, but all the revenue we get in, a lot of that has to be allocated to certain sections, and I agree, we will get some increased revenues, but roads, roads are pricey, and they go up, they've been going up higher just as much as the water system. We just haven't maintained, that's all I'm mentioning.
Imagine if we had a strategic planning meeting to discuss all these things and plan future. Sorry.
I didn't catch the last part.
I said, imagine if we had a strategic planning meeting to discuss all these things for future growth.
And we have, in the past.
I requested it three months in a row. Come on.
No.
I requested it three months.
Well, I'm sorry, that upsets me. Okay, I've had three meetings over the last, I'm working twenty, thirty hours of a paycheck, and it's, it's work, I said, and I've told you multiple times that we're gonna have them, but there's only so much a human possibly could do in a month, it just can't happen.
And you know I've said to you, like, I'm, Paul, I-
But I told you, we're gonna schedule that, and I just, I don't want you negatively affecting that, because that comes down on me.
But we're going down that road by saying, well, we have this coming, that coming, I mean, you mentioned roundabouts and all these other things, that's all planning, like, that means that we plan poorly. I mean, that's a plan poor.
That's not plan poor, there's been a roundabout on the plan for fifteen years at the MPO for downtown, maybe twenty? So, it's all stuff, it's just stuff you haven't got to know about yet, and we got, I mean, you've only been on council for a few months, and I'm truly not saying this negatively, it's just gonna take time to get caught up on all this stuff, and we can't do it all in a day, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Don't worry, I'm not, I don't wanna fight with you, Paul.
No, I appreciate you, Joe. I appreciate all you do.
All righty. Alan, you got anything?
Now that you gave me the microphone, a couple things here. Why have we not included Bellicalina? If we wanna generate some money, Bellicalina will be the same lot size as Osgood.
Well, there's, you can only claim a certain percentage of the town, I don't remember what it is, but that was the problem.
Okay, then if we go down to Ninth Street and say, from Ninth Street North is gone, and we flip, and we go-
I'm all for it.
To Osgood. I mean, we're not, this isn't chiseled, and this isn't our destiny as it stands right now, or is it?
I raised the same question.
I mean, you can do up to eighty percent of the town.
Okay.
When I looked at the CRA, again, I kind of look at that nexus of where the biggest needs are and deficiencies are in town, because that's part of it. You could expand and do that, but when, you know, you know, the Mag Terrace roads, for instance, they, they do meet our code. The new subdivision on Morning Side down there, that meets the code at the time, you know, five, seven years ago, so we don't have, there's stormwater in those developments. You know, there's a cave saw, obviously, for Down and Alpha in that area that could be made, but there's not the deficiencies in the roads, I guess, in that area, and there's sidewalks, and, you know, there's still some that need to be built, but at least there's some things in that area.
Can you show, flip back to the Osgood property, where it had the units and thirty-one-hundred dollars, and, yeah, go back to that, there you go. I look at that, and I say, okay, that's gonna generate us, what are we looking at, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year? Bellicalina would equal or increase that, that's almost a million right there. We're allowed to eighty percent, so we've taken out Mag Terrace, which is understandable, that's no blight, quote-unquote, there. But what about East Ridgewood? That's a area that is, we don't have water down there running water lines, we don't have, very little road to begin with, narrow roads, we have residents down there that don't have sidewalks. That would be an area that I would consider, question why it's not been included. You mentioned, you mentioned-
Can we include it? I mean, you're, yes, sir.
I mean, we would have to do a calculation of the area, and we'd also have to look at the area for the need and the necessities and the blight.
Okay. The term was used, redevelop organically, and I wrote down into what? Could you give me some direction on that?
So, it's not really into what, it's just that the opportunity for redevelopment to be encouraged, so it would, every place can be different. Organically just means that it's going to be the individual investing that property without local government assistance in some way, whether it's through the infrastructure improvements that make the area more enjoyable or desirable, but organically just means that it's gonna happen in the market on its own.
Okay. I come back to this one question, that it kind of sticks in my mind, and I can't figure it around it, so if you can help me, any of you, I would, in the audience also, would be helpful. Potential increment collections, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars per year. We're being told that Lake County will give us that back every year. I find it hard to believe that Lake County is gonna say, you collected half a million dollars, we can't use it, but we'll give it back to Montbird. I've never found a county government that says, we collected it, but now you can have it back. I question that. I also question financial-
Real quick, may I answer that one real quick? So, I've had one initial conversation with Lake County, and they have a CRA in Lake County too, by the way, so they're familiar with it. They have asked the council if we could leave out the emergency assessments for ambulance and fire, because that's the one they struggled, because in theory, we're entitled to that increment, but as you obviously build a house, they still have to service those houses, that seems like a reasonable request.
You left it out, didn't you, on the thirty-one-hundred?
Yeah, I, on this one, I did up here, I left, I left them on vert taxes out.
Something's wrong with our screen. Is it on, on that side?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's just on this side, okay, no problem.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a problem with that, that's, that would be inhumane to say you can't-
Yeah, then I would have to, Anita would ask us, that there's any other reviews by the county, or is it, does the county have to do anything else as far as our plan? Like, do they have to agree to it?
They don't have to agree, they obviously will look at the plan, they were interested in knowing what kind of projects the town is interested in including in the CRA plan, but they will review it. It doesn't have to be an agreement, since you meet the conditions in the statute.
Okay, so, playing devil's advocate, if we, we're gonna do something, but we don't know what they're gonna do, it's kind of like a couple of years ago, just vote on the federal legislation and we'll read it later, is what I get out of that. The county-
Well, you have to prove it, so we can send it to them. Sorry, go ahead.
Right, so if this were to be approved this evening, then the plan is developed, the plan goes to the county. They do have a thirty-day period, we gave them notice of this finding the necessity. They have thirty days to notify us that they want to sit down and discuss it, basically an objection to it, that maybe they don't think we meet the criteria, but have those discussions. So, we're still within that period of time.
So, what are, what are our outlets? If we go down the road and we say, this is great, and then the county says, no, so then we come back and regroup, or do we have a CRA, or are we waiting for a CRA because we don't know if we can have a CRA? If that's the question.
So, if the county were to raise an objection, then we would go through a negotiation process with them, you would have the ability to repeal this resolution if you chose to. Right. And then if the legislation is approved, and we're beyond the July first, you would not be able to create a new CRA.
Okay. Well, second thing that comes back, several years ago, we had a downturn in the economy, Lake County couldn't afford to put roads down, and we saw that up on Sugarloaf Mountain, that Sugarloaf Mountain was pretty much detained and slowed down the development of Sugarloaf Mountain up there, the old Sugarloaf Mountain now, because the county didn't have funds to widen four-fifty-five going up through Sugarloaf Mountain to the Howie Arches or the roundabout up there. So, my question would be, financially, we get in a situation which they cycle, and to say they never will happen again is ludicrous, but what happens when the county, they can't meet their financial obligations to us? I find a county commissioners group saying, we need every penny we got, why are we gonna give you money back that we can use in the county?
What's the CRAs in place, I mean, they're obligated to give it back, because it's technically Montbird's money.
Are there any caps or reductions they can do? Reduction twenty percent, forty percent, or is it, is it-
I mean, if their taxes go down, the CRA taxes will go down, and so will Montbird taxes go down.
But the volume, the whole, if they go down, it's great, but do we still get our full share, or is it reduced share? I know the reduced of what we're getting is less, but-
We'll get the increment off of the base from when it was established, so if it was three thousand when it was established, and it went to thirty-five hundred, and it was five hundred one year, then it comes down to thirty-one hundred, because they lowered the value of the house, you would only get that hundred bucks. So, it'd be the increment off of the base from the day it was established.
Wow, okay.
And one thing, I will say, on the, on the county side, I know they don't give a large percentage, they're actually starting to finally budget some percentages of money toward roads, which they haven't done in the past, but most of the roads are MPO funded through the state in the MPO. And what's nice, I think what's appealing on this project to the county is that some of the projects we're looking at are to the county road, and fixing up along the county road, so we're actually investing in the road that they probably won't have money to do those investments in the future.
Well, that kind of brings me back, if it's a county road, why are we investing to take care of a county road, which I, I get, I got it, Paul, but it just, you know, they don't have money, but they're gonna give us our money back so we can do what they can't do, to try and find that out, it doesn't-
Everybody's fighting for the dollar.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of, they're gonna fight for the dollar, and they usually win, that's the, what I come up with on that. Well, we talked about streetscapes, sidewalks, and trails. One of our gentlemen back on Long Ridge had said about walking around the town and riding the bicycle, and I've noticed this, we've got a lot of trees, if we're gonna start putting sidewalks, I kind of wonder where the sidewalk's gonna go in our right-of-ways, because most of our right-of-ways have got our big historic oaks sitting there, and we're already fighting a problem within, which can be resolved, but we're fighting with Mag Terrace fixing sidewalks, because trees tear up sidewalks all the time, so it just kind of seems, hmm, okay, interesting. We talked about encouraging improvements, and I thought, wrote down here, why Montbird is the most desirable in Lake County? How do you improve the most desirable to make it more desirable, shall we say? Kind of, hmm, oxymoron there. That's pretty much what I had on this, those are my thoughts on it. Mike, I agree with Broad and Temple, if there's ever a poster child for a CRA, that is the poster child area. I wouldn't have a heartbeat problem with doing it for there. We can, can expand it only to eighty percent, but can we reduce it? Or does it justify, Paul, to reduce it, the area of our CRA from what we have listed now?
I mean, yeah, we could reduce the size if, if that's what the council wants to do. We can only increase it up to eighty percent of the size of the town, if that's what council wants to do. You know, again, we, the site was selected, we just look at all the projects where we know road improvements are needed in the very near future and/or sidewalk connections, so that, that really was the biggest factors, repaving.
Well, I got a few phone calls, I don't know if the other resident or other council members, but I had some people, shall we say, in the pines, that said, we're in a blighted area? Since when are we in a blighted area? We're included in the map, and you kind of had to say, I'll have an answer for you. Kind of struggled with that a little bit. I told them, I'll come to the meeting and find out, get a good answer, so that's pretty much what I've got. I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. So, we can do Bellicalina?
Oh, I don't need to answer that.
There's another five minutes.
This study would need to be updated to see if the expanded area that you want to include meets the conditions under the statute.
Okay.
Well, I would just, meets the condition under the statute, Osgood's bare ground, Bellicalina bare ground, so there's, you know, it's just-
Hey, my house is in the CRA, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, the other, it's just not the bare ground, it's, Anita was saying, it's not continuous, so that you can't chop and break the CRA up, so then we would have to, we'd have to study the whole area down, four-fifty-five, to get to there in Ridgewood and et cetera, in that area.
I ask you, have you analyzed, analyzed, better word?
Analyzed.
That too.
Analyzed.
It's a long day. What that would include if Bellicalina was included in that? Would that be, I know it has to be continuous, Montbird Academy kind of breaks up the continuous of that, but if the existing prior to the annexation of Bellicalina, would that be within the eighty percent?
I really can't, without us doing an actual evaluation, because we do have to look at those two things, how much additional land would that be, and how does it fit the criteria of blight? So- So I would have to look at it.
Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to be a stick in the mud to say, man, you drug that thing out to July, and then the state said, you can't do it. And it's like, oh, there it goes. But these are some questions I feel I need to ask.
The other issue of getting too much property in, all the, so all the increment increases in that CRA have to go into the CRA bucket. And if you have 80% of your town in the CRA bucket, and now we don't have any increment increases that go to the general fund to fund other operations that aren't CRA related, so we've got to be careful that we don't take so much that we're not letting our general fund expand over the years from the growth that's going on too, that pay for inflation. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Alan brings, Alan brought up a good point to me. So if we did, Osgood went up the east side of 455, all the way to Ridgewood, and had all that in there, and then came over and grabbed Bellicalina, we're done. As long as it's less than 80%. So now, the money that we're gonna make, which is gonna be a million bucks, has to go in that area, correct? So we're gonna have diamond sidewalks coming down.
But now you're, there's no actual blight in the other area of the town. But by now, you're switching it to another part of the town.
I think there'd be a legal challenge.
It's kind of weird.
I think there'll be a legal challenge.
That's why we got a lawyer. That's why we got a lawyer.
Yeah, but you don't want to pay for her 24/7. I think there'll be a legal challenge for this.
All right, any other?
I have one more question. Can you do a CRA if there's no blight?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna end it with this for me, for Osgood. This is my, the last thing I was.
May I clarify one thing?
Go ahead.
When you are analyzing the area, it's not that you're labeling individual properties as blighted properties. It's defining that an area has conditions of blight within it. So I just want to make sure people understand that.
Right, but if those areas also have other plans already in the works to rebuild a certain roads or to do stormwater, that, you can't really use stormwater as a blighted issue anymore, because we've already gone down that road. This is all, this is all topic of what I was recently gonna talk about.
That's okay. So if, if there are projects that are unfunded, and your increment could provide funding for that, so it would, it'd be a viable project?
Part of Osgood agreement was they were gonna rebuild those roads, that we, some of these roads. And we're saying, obviously not just those roads are blighted, but, I'm just gonna, I'm good. The last thing I have is, to me, this is gonna create an actually artificial TIF windfall. It's not tied to blight, it's just purely based on new construction. And that's, that's the issue I have with this. It's really, it's the Osgood property being added into all of this. That's, that's one of my major issues I have. I do see it as a legal challenge. I understand we have Anita, and that's fine, it's just something that we don't want to, again, Paul, they went to Florida Supreme Court. I really don't want to sit up here and say, well, residents, hey, guys, we need to raise taxes, as you're saying, because we need to pay for the attorney. Because that's what's gonna end up happening, if a resident decides to do it, or if Lake County challenges, or the state challenges it.
Or they don't. Or they don't challenge it.
Well, the other side of the coin too, the elephant in the room, is impact fees. We're gonna do impact fees. Everybody who's gonna be on here is gonna be paying impact fees. We got transportation impact fees. What's that gonna go to?
Well, remember, impact fees are one-time shot. This is 25 years. This, impact fees just happen once.
And I get, and that's a good point, because.
We're done with public speaking, sorry.
Impact fees are part of that funding puzzle, and I look at it, think just from the funding. Impact fees can only go for expansion or improvement, we can't go repave a road with it. And so the only thing we have to repave road right now is general funds, which we don't have enough of those funds to do. So that's, this is that funding mechanism at the end of the day.
Which also goes back to Osgood giving us the money to, yeah, do the road, so, okay.
Some of them, correct.
Some of them, correct.
Is everybody having fun? All right. All righty, what do you guys want to do?
Go home?
Me too.
Question for a juror.
I'll make a motion.
Huh?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-166.
Is that the one we're on? Okay, I have a motion to approve 2025-166. Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Do a roll call on this one?
We're all right. We're only four of us. All in favor, say aye. Now, am I wrong when you make a motion to it, that you automatically are agreeing to?
No, we went through this at the last meeting.
Under Roberts' rules of order, that's correct.
Did you know that? You make a motion, you're agreeing with it? Okay.
No, I, no, I made a motion to get it on the table. That's all I made a motion for, whether I voted for it or not, it was irrelevant.
You're making a motion to approve it?
I made the motion to approve it, but I didn't vote for it yet.
Well, no, what she's telling you is when you make the motion to approve it.
No, not under Roberts' rules.
I don't think you follow Roberts' rules, though.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you know that.
We don't follow Roberts', we don't, I don't need to, I don't have to.
And mayor, I'm sorry for, our clerk, we were unclear what the vote count was.
I don't think we have one yet.
We don't have a full vote. So under Roberts' rules, the person making the motion can't vote against it, but the mayor also can't make motions. So you have, it's not in your code that you follow Roberts' rules, and based on your practice, you don't follow Roberts' rules.
Okay. All right, just making sure that's clear. All right, so we have a motion.
So for clarification, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, clarification, if Councilman Morganelli makes it, Joe cannot second it, it would have to be Councilman Womack or myself?
No, I could second it.
Okay.
No, he can't make the motion.